Good evening. Welcome to the January 7, 2025, meeting of the Greensboro City Council. We are in the Katie Dorsett Council Chamber. Let the record reflect that all members are in attendance. We will begin tonight's meeting with a moment of silence, and I would like us to keep in mind Officer Haran's family. His funeral will be Thursday at 2:00 at Westover Church. We know that his family, GPD, the responders in the city of Greensboro are grieving for him, if we can keep them all in our thoughts. Thank you. Dr. Wells, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have a youth courier today since school was canceled. I do want to let the public know that the city of Greensboro began the application process for the open-at-large seat on January 2. The portal will close at the end of business on January 17. Council will hold a special meeting on January 28, in which candidates will have five minutes to provide qualifications for council consideration. The city of Greensboro strongly encourages resident input at our meetings. It is the goal of City Council that the Katie Dorsett Council Chamber is a welcoming and safe space for all community members. In order to speak at tonight's meeting, individuals must sign up to speak by 6:00 P.M. If you had signed up to speak online, you do need to let the courier know that you are in attendance. Speakers may address specific consent or business agenda items with three minutes allocated for their remarks. For zoning matters, there is a 15-minute presentation time for both proponents and opponents of the rezoning, and a five-minute rebuttal period for each side. Speakers cannot relinquish their time to others in the order of which speakers is determined by the presiding officer. Depending on the number of speakers, council may adjust the time allocation for each person. Any handouts must be given to the courier for distribution. Speakers are expected to follow the rules of decorum, and any inappropriate behavior may result in removal from the meeting. Such removal will lead to an immediate three-month suspension from in-person participation. In cases of physical altercations, the suspension period extends to 12 months, and criminal charges may apply. For those who are suspended, virtual participation via Zoom remains an option to preserve their right to free speech. Please silence any electronic devices if you must make or receive a phone call; kindly do so from outside the chamber. Zoom participants shall mute their microphones until they are called upon to speak. By statute, council members must vote on all items unless there is a direct financial interest, or if they sit on a board of a nonprofit receiving funding from the city. All votes will be moved and seconded, and the mayor will announce the vote total. We do have a consent agenda for items G1 through G6, which are a grouping of agenda items that are voted on with one single vote to expedite what is believed to be routine and non-controversial. Any council member may withdraw an item from the consent agenda due to a conflict of interest or for the purpose of voting no. Items removed from the consent agenda for discussion will be placed on the January 21 City Council Business Meeting. This meeting does include closed captioning. Depending on the length of tonight's meeting, we will take a short recess around 7:30. We do have a number of ceremonial and presentation items tonight. Item E1 is a resolution to honor the late Arthur P. Bell. Mrs. Hightower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you. This resolution is to honor someone who lived a very long life, I believe, until the age of 93, and did a lot of things, great things, in our community. I was honored to know him. He was someone that I represented, but way before I ever became on council. He mentored me in NAACP, A&amp;T. He was just someone who was very special to me, a very sweet gentleman, and he used to call me sometime and share some things with me, and I was honored when he did that, that I had his respect, but even greater still, I respected him. Excuse me. He lived on the corner of Bimbo Road and Florida Street, so every time I'm at that light, I just see his house, and I think about him almost daily when I ride through there, and he is certainly someone who will be missed. So, resolution honoring the late Dr. Arthur P. Bell. Whereas on October 13, 2024, Greensboro lost a devoted member of our community with the passing of Dr. Arthur P. Bell. Whereas Dr. Bell was born January 9, tomorrow will be a day, Thursday, we will celebrate him, 1928, on a farm in Reevesville, North Carolina, and from an early age, he grew a deep passion for agriculture, which led him to North Carolina Agricultural and Technical State University, North Carolina A&amp;T. Whereas his academics took a brief pause when he was called to serve in World War II. He was part of the Army's 257th Quartermaster Company. He journeyed across the Atlantic aboard the Queen Mary, landing in Marseille, France, and eventually serving in Okinawa, Japan. Upon return, he graduated with honors from North Carolina A&amp;T in 1948, began a career as a vocational agricultural teacher in Rowan County, and in 1954, was awarded a graduate fellowship, earning his master's and doctoral degree from Penn State University. Whereas Dr. Bell's tenure with North Carolina A&amp;T began in 1958. As an assistant professor, he dedicated himself to teaching, and later held positions as a professor and chairman of the department. Following his retirement from North Carolina A&amp;T in 1994, he continued to guide the university's senate as president for eight years. Whereas Dr. Bell's commitment to the community included being a proud veteran, serving in World War II, where he was awarded with the Bronze Star, Victory Medal, and Good Conduct Medal. He was a dedicated member of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated, a member of the American Association for Agricultural Education, and the National Association of Agricultural Educators, a lifelong membership with the National Association of the Advancement of Colored People, NAACP, where he chaired the annual banquet for many years, chaired the Hayes Taylor Young's Men's Christian Association Board, inducted into the Hall of Fame at North Carolina A&amp;T in 2016, and remained a faithful member of Providence Baptist Church. Whereas Dr. Bell will be remembered for his willingness to offer a helping hand, along with his commitment to youth education, and now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Greensboro, that the City Council wishes to express its sense of loss and offer its condolences and sincere appreciation for the many years of dedication to community service by Dr. Arthur P. Bell. The legacy he leaves will be remembered as one offering love and inspiration to the countless people he met, and that a copy of this resolution shall be delivered to the family of the late Dr. Arthur P. Bell as a symbol of the gratitude of the residents of the city of Greensboro for his contributions in the community. And I would like to move this resolution.
Okay, moved by Mrs. Hightower, seconded by Dr. Wells. Council, please vote. And that passes eight to zero.
His family is here, had a set of twins, Benita and Bernard are here, and some family are here as well, and so I would like for them to come up, so to present this resolution and to hear a few little words from them. He raised some wonderful children, and I know they are absolutely proud of him, as I am proud of him, and just the fact that I knew him and I will miss him. Thank you.
Well, I want to, so thank Congresswoman, Councilwoman Hightower. I almost said Senator. But thank you all for this opportunity to say a few words, and I'll be brief. My daddy always said, "Blessed are the brief, for they shall be invited back." That was his favorite scripture. We haven't found it yet. But he loved this town of Greensboro. He loved the community. He loved A&amp;T, and I saw the former chancellor back there, and he thought highly of you, Chancellor Martin. And I'm just very grateful that the city would take time to acknowledge my dad. He grew up in Reevesville. He loved farming. He had us pulling tobacco from the time we were six years old, until the day before my freshman, me and my sister's freshman year in college down at Chapel Hill. We hated every minute of it, but we learned early that we might not have been the brightest bulbs on the tree, but we could outwork anybody, and that work ethic was important. Daddy said many times, "Only do what's necessary." I think he left a legacy for us personally of working hard. He said, "Work hard, have integrity, treat people with respect, and if you do that, you'll never have to look over your shoulder, thinking that you treated the pauper like the prince, and the prince like the pauper." He also told us, he said, "Make sure that you understand your voice, and you make sure that you acknowledge it. You acknowledge those who have come before you, and to make sure that you respect everyone, because everyone deserves respect, no matter where they grew up, and no matter how they transitioned over in life." He loved A&amp;T. He loved Penn State University. We lived up there when he was getting his PhD, and the Nittany Lion, my sister and I would stand there, and we would be totally afraid because we thought the lion was going to come to life. But of that, that time, he told us very early, and I've said this many times, he said, "Bernard, there are some good white people out here in the world." And at his age, and living and growing up in the Jim Crow South, for him to be able to say that and have that as an ideal that we grew up with, I think it shaped me and my sister and brother's perspective on the world, and I am just very grateful because I think the world needs more people like that. Benita, do you have any comments?
First, I would like to thank the City Council for all of your efforts, along with Sharon Hightower for honoring our father. As I sit here, I just look at the wonderful residents, the community of Greensboro, and as I keep looking, gazing back at Chancellor Martin, I remember when my mother passed. Chancellor Martin, you were one of the first people that called the home, and you were always so supportive throughout my father's tenure. Val Dorsett, your mom and my father were very dear friends in your family. So I just want to say that when I think of my dad, he taught us the importance of integrity. He taught us the importance of decency. But what remains with me is the importance of humility, and that everything in life is connected, every single thing, and we're all energy, and that the energy that we impart to one another should always come from a higher place. And as a scientist, I always believe, I always use this motto, "Energy is transferred and transformed." So to all of you good souls here in this room, on the helm of my dad, just always, no matter who you meet, make sure that we transfer and we transform great energy. I did not think, I told Sharon that I could stand up here. I was the daddy's girl, and so I was transformed, you know, when my father passed, but it's all good, and when I look at the smiles and the beautiful hearts here, I just want to say to all of you, thank you, and you all matter, and you all made a difference. And lastly, I just want to acknowledge, if anybody's seen my dad, you see his brother, people actually think it's him. This is my uncle, Dr. J.C. Bell, and my two, his two nieces, who he just adored, Jackie and Margie, so I want to thank them for coming, and thank you all. Be blessed.
Item E2 is a resolution to honor the late Robert Bob Kohler. Mrs. Thurman, Mrs. Abuzawater?
Yes, and Madam Mayor, we are also going to add Mrs. Hoffman on here, but first, if I may take just a moment, Bob served on many boards and commissions, and I do want to acknowledge those that are in the room here. I do know from Parks and Rec, we have C.C. Crawford, if y'all can just raise your hand. Keisha was going to come, Carl Brower, Justin Washington, Kelly Gaines, and I know that several in the Human Rights Commission were going to be here also, and possibly Minimum Housing, if you could raise your hands briefly. Yes, yes, so there are a lot of people here in support of this resolution. And I'll first ask Mrs. Thurman to go ahead and start.
Thank you. Whereas on September 21, 2024, this community lost one of its outstanding civic leaders with the passing of the late Robert Bob Kohler. Whereas Mr. Kohler was born in Vero Beach, Florida on May 30, 1940, educated at Kentucky Military Institute, graduated from Emory University, earned both a master's degree and an educational specialist degree from Appalachian State University, and served in the Georgia National Guard. Whereas he moved to North Carolina in 1965, where he began a 43-year career with Guilford County Schools, was a social studies teacher at Southeast High School, and later served as principal at Oak Ridge, Sedalia, and Brown Summit Elementary Schools.
Whereas Mr. Kohler was an active member of Guilford Park Presbyterian Church, which he joined in 1966. He assumed many leadership roles within the church, including elder and delegate to one of the general assemblies of the Presbyterian Church, where he traveled to Ghana on two teaching missions. Whereas with a political action viewpoint, both locally and at the national level, he was involved with community improvement and issues concerning and impacting the residents in the city of Greensboro, and was a leader on various local civic committees over the past decade. Whereas Mr. Kohler served as commissioner on the Advisory Committee on Trees, a committee established to enforce the tree preservation ordinance until the commission was dissolved by the Greensboro City Council in 2012.
Whereas he served as the District 5 Commissioner for the Minimum Housing Standards Commission, appointed by former council member Wilkins in 2014, and was reappointed by council member Tammy Thurman in 2017. Whereas in 2015, he was appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission, reappointed in 2018, and appointed to the Human Rights Commission in 2020, and reappointed in 2023. Whereas Mr. Kohler's goals included making the world a better place through kindness and helping others, he once stated. If anything is said...
and helping others, he once stated, "If anything is said about me, it could be he did his best to help others." And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Greensboro, that the City Council wishes to offer its condolences, sincere appreciation, and gratitude for the many years of dedicated public service by Robert Bob Kohler. And that a copy of this resolution shall be delivered to the family of the late Robert Bob Kohler as a symbol of the gratitude of the residents of the City of Greensboro. And Madam Mayor, I would like to make that motion, please.
Moved by Mrs. Abuzawater, seconded by Mrs. Thurm. Council please vote. And that passes eight to zero.
And Mrs. Kohler, if you would like to come up and say a few words, and I see Bob's good friends Lynn Bennett, Jim Bennett are here as well, if either of them would like to come up. And I also saw Dr. Sean Smith with the Human Rights Commission in the audience. Uh, don't know if I missed anyone else.
Thank you for your tribute to Bob in this resolution, which I really appreciate. Uh, when he retired from his long time with public education, he became, as the resolution states, very involved with various councils in both the county and the city, and, um, he loved doing that. Um, it, it was his favorite thing to do in retirement. Um, and he liked to uphold people, um, the downtrodden, encouraging them when times were tough. Um, and I think he certainly enjoyed meeting so many of you and working with you. I thank you for your tribute to him. Um, my sons live in distant states, or they would be here too, and I appreciate your kind words. Thank you.
Thank you. Item I3 is a resolution to honor the retirement of Chancellor Harold L. Martin Sr., to be read by Mr. Holston, Mrs. Hightower, and Dr. Wells.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution to honor the retirement of Chancellor Harold L. Martin Sr. Whereas Hal Lee Martin Sr., the 12th Chancellor of North Carolina Agricultural and Technical State University, is the first alumnus to serve as the university's chief executive officer. Whereas Chancellor Martin earned both a Bachelor's of Science and a Master's of Science in Electrical Engineering at North Carolina A and T, and a doctoral degree from Virginia Polytechnic Institute and State University in the same field. Whereas Chancellor Martin began his educational career at his alma mater, North Carolina A and T, worked in various capacities within the school's Electrical Engineering Department, including Dean of the College of Engineering from 1989 to 1994, and was appointed as Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs of the university from 1994 to 1999. Uh-oh, Chancellor Martin. The papers are sticking together, sorry about that. Whereas in 2000, Chancellor Martin was appointed Chancellor of Winston-Salem State University, WSSU, a position he held into 2006. Under his leadership, the state university saw approximately a 66% increase in enrollment. Freshmen Scholastic Aptitude Test SAT scores increased by 70 points, and the campus underwent a physical transformation aided by a $45 million higher education bond program in 2000. Whereas in 2006, Chancellor Martin stepped down from Winston-Salem State University leadership to accept the position of Senior Vice President of Academic Affairs at the University of North Carolina, UNC, General Administration. Under his guidance, the university's academic mission, including teaching, research, international programs, and student affairs, were developed and implemented.
Whereas on May 22nd, 2009, Chancellor Martin was elected the 12th Chancellor of North Carolina A and T, a position he held for 15 years. During his tutelage, he was instrumental in a strategic plan which identified six specific goals, including diversity and research activity, which pitched, positioned North Carolina A and T to become a premier institution of higher learning on a state, national, and international level. Whereas the A and T Preeminence 2020 Plan led the university on a plan of, a path of steady enrollment, a reorganization of sports programs, improved academic profiles, enhanced performance within its intercollegiate sports programs, and growth in research funding. Whereas in fall of 2019, Chancellor Martin's 10-year anniversary year, NC A and T welcomed its largest and most diverse group ever, reaching 12,556 students from 44 states, the District of Columbia, Puerto Rico, the U.S. Virgin Islands, and 68 foreign nations. Whereas throughout his 35-year career, Chancellor Martin championed for affordable and accessible public higher education, furthered the growth of A, North Carolina A and T, to become the largest historically black college and/or university, HBCU, in the United States, and established the institution as an education and research leader in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics STEM programs.
Whereas Chancellor Martin guided North Carolina A and T to expand its infrastructure for the development and construction of a Joint School of Nanoscience and Nanoengineering. Additionally, the university leveraged a $19 million bond package from the state of North Carolina for the Engineering Research and Innovation Complex, which bears Chancellor Martin Sr.'s name. Whereas Chancellor Martin was lauded by Time Magazine, being called an education and business thought leader, was bestowed with the Thurgood Marshall College Fund Education Leadership Award, named America's Most Influential HBCU Leader by HBCU Digest, Triad Business Journal as the Most Admired CEO, and named to the Ebony Power 100 List. Whereas Chancellor Martin served as an advocate of community engagement and civic duty, is a member of and offers his service to numerous fraternities, boards, councils, including Tau Beta Pi, the Engineering Honor Society, the American Council on Education, Ada Kappa Nu Association, the Association of Public and Land Grant Universities, Beta Gamma Sigma, Piedmont Triad Regional Development Council, Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, Research Triangle Institute, the Honor Society of Phi Beta, of Phi Kappa Phi, Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Review Advisory Board, and the National Collegiate Athletic Association Limited Resource Institutions Advisory Group. Whereas Chancellor Martin's leadership, distinguished by long-term strategic planning, has improved North Carolina A and T's footprint among the nation's land grant, doctoral universities, and HBCUs. And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Greensboro, that the City Council wishes to recognize... That the City Council wishes to recognize the retirement of Chancellor Harold L. Martin Sr., and express its admiration for the dedication, time, and efforts given to remodel North Carolina A and T, the City of Greensboro, and the nation. That a copy of this resolution shall be delivered to Chancellor Martin as a symbol of gratitude of the City of Greensboro for its contributions to the community, adopted this 7th day of January 2025. And I believe we have Chancellor Martin and his, I'm sorry, move the item, please.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Holston, um, seconded by Dr. Wells, and Mrs.
And we have Chancellor Martin and his lovely wife, Devita, are here with us for a couple of comments.
Good evening. Certainly thank you, uh, members of the City Council, in particular, Dr. Wells, um, Ms. Hightower, and Mr. Holston, and the entire City Council for this incredible recognition. Uh, Devita and I are, what we characterize as ordinary people, uh, we had the great pleasure of leading North Carolina A and T State University for 15 years. But our love affair with North Carolina A and T, and quite frankly with this community, began back in 1970, when I arrived here as a freshman at North Carolina A and T State University, and Devita shortly thereafter. We were high school sweethearts, and it's through that connection that brought us to North Carolina A and T as well. But more importantly, our passion for this community and for this university. And it's through the work that we were able to do there together that has inspired us throughout our careers. We also had an opportunity to realize, having grown up in the Piedmont Triad region in Winston-Salem, and the incredible opportunities, uh, as a state with great manufacturing, and many of those jobs haven't gone away, it inspired us to realize the important role that North Carolina A and T State University as a land grant institution, heavily in STEM, needed to play. And you provided an opportunity as partners, uh, through the City Manager's Office, the Mayor's Office, incredible work and engagement with you, Mayor Von, over the years. And thank you for all of your immense support and this incredible work with the City Council. Your investment not only in supporting Greensboro and its growth, but in particular the investments in East Greensboro, the relationships that are beginning to take fruit and demonstrating inclusion for all in this community in very significant ways. And we are pleased and excited to see all of the jobs beginning to spring up in this community, and what it means for all of us with the investment you continue to make. So in closing, I want to assure you, while it is a opportunity of retirement for my wife and me, we are still heavily engaged in what's important for this community in ensuring that the work that we all continue to do continues to take fruit and deliver significant outgrowth and opportunities for this community and this region and beyond as well. So thank you for this recognition tonight. We are awfully excited and enthused, and we will cherish this recognition for years to come. Thank you very much.
Uh, Chancellor Martin, uh, there's an old television commercial that says, but wait, there's more. There is a medieval tradition that is meant to confer trust and honor. It grows from the medieval walled city, whose gates were guarded during the day and locked by key at night. The actual key to the city would function to open the city gates. The key symbolizes the freedom of the recipient to enter and leave the city at will, as a trusted friend of city residents. In the modern era, the key to the city is a beloved symbol of civic recognition and gratitude reserved for individuals whose service to the public and common good rises to the highest level of achievement. So Chancellor Emeritus Harold L. Martin Sr., on behalf of Mayor Von and the Greensboro City Council, we are proud to bestow upon you the key to the City of Greensboro, North Carolina, for your meritorious service and outstanding achievements. Please join us in congratulating Chancellor Emeritus Harold L. Martin.
I'm sure that we all have some comments or stories about the Chancellor, and it was my honor to serve on the Board of Visitors for a number of years, and really get to know Chancellor Martin and, um, A and T. It is a wonderful university. We always talk about it being the biggest HBCU in the country, but it is the best HBCU in the country. You know, we, we talk about economic development, and if it wasn't for Chancellor Martin and North Carolina A and T, and the wonderful students, graduates, that they prepare for, for their future, we would not have been able to secure much of that economic development. We always talk about the engineering students and how they leave to go somewhere else, where we're hoping that these announcements that they helped us secure will keep them here in the City of Greensboro and not go off to Atlanta or some other place, because we are just as good as those other cities. And thank you, Chancellor, for your work in economic development, we truly appreciate it. And, um, one of my best memories, and it's the one that probably gave you an awful lot of street cred with your, um, students, was when, you know, normally you do a ground breaking for, uh, for a building. Um, Chancellor actually did a building breaking, and it was, um, when the, um, the old Hayes Taylor came down to make room for the building that would bear his name, um, which is the Eric Building, Engineering Research and Innovation Complex. Um, and he took a backhoe and, um, disassembled, uh, disassembled that building in a suit in front of, in front of his students, and it was, um, it was really cool, and, um, I enjoyed it. And I know that every one of your students thought you were really cool.
Since A and T is in District Two, I'm always proud to say that District Two has the largest HBCU, but thanks for the support that you've given and the concern that you've had about our economic development, and we see things coming forth that's going to make East Greensboro even better. Thanks for all you've done.
And so while Goldie claims, um, this, I also have A and T in District One, let's don't forget, uh, that, but, but-
You deserve everything that you have gotten. Thank you.
And Chancellor Martin, I just want to say, I think everyone has pretty much said quite a few things that you've done. I still believe there are more things you will do. I think that is one thing that I learned from listening to you so much, you know, Aggies do. And I think that, you know, I want you to enjoy your retirement, but we don't want you to go far. So please stick around and help and stay part of the community, as I know you will. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We will now move on to item E4, a resolution to honor the 200th anniversary of the First Presbyterian Church of Greensboro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I know that Reverend Duffield and Marshall Brown and Mr. Hassel are in the audience, anyone else as well. And if you like, after we read the resolution, you could come up and say a few words. So whereas First Presbyterian Church has been a vital part of Greensboro for the last 200 years, whereas founded in 1824 by the Reverend William Denny Paisley, its first permanent facility was constructed in 1832 and was the first Presbyterian church to be established within the city limits, whereas the second building, constructed in 1846, served as a hospital during the Civil War. Whereas during its history, the church has been the spiritual home for many of the city's civic and business leaders, including two mayors, several members of the United States Congress, and numerous state and local officials. Whereas 12 different pastors have led its congregation, including Dr. John Redhead, who preached to millions on his National Protestant Hour radio program in the mid-20th century. Whereas First Presbyterian Church and its members assisted in the growth of the city through the birthing 10 additional churches in and around Greensboro. Whereas its former home now serves as the Greensboro History Museum and represents a vital link to the past. Whereas First Presbyterian Church has established numerous programs to aid the city, including Hot Dish &amp; Hope, which serves free meals to hundreds of people every week, Step Up Ministry, which supplies job readiness training, and Help Launch the Greensboro Habitat for Humanity, which provides safe, stable, and affordable housing, as well as many other programs that benefit Greensboro. Whereas it has endeavored to be honest about its participation in the sin of slavery and continues to seek meaningful racial reconciliation through the repair of historical harms. Whereas First Presbyterian Church works to be a good steward of creation, serving as one of the primary glass and styrofoam recycling centers for the city. And whereas for over 75 years, First Presbyterian has welcomed the little children of our city in its accredited preschool. Whereas First Presbyterian Church currently serves as a spiritual home for 2,500 members under the guidance of Reverend Dr. Jill Duffield. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Greensboro that the city recognizes with thanks and celebrates the 200th anniversary of First Presbyterian Church, adopted this the seventh day of January 2025. I would like to move the item.
Second. Counsel, please vote. And if that passes, eight to zero.
And if they would like to come forward now? Yes, Dr. Duffield?
And you, one item I don't think was in the resolution is the special relationship that First Presbyterian and Temple Emmanuel had all through the years, and what a unifying force that was within our city. Thank you, Madam.
On behalf of the session of First Presbyterian Church, I'd like to thank Mayor Vaughn and Councilwoman Abuza Waiter and all of the city council for recognizing this milestone in the life of our congregation. The mission of our church is rooted and reaching in Christ's love. We will serve God as spirit-led changemakers for good. And while we're grateful for our storied history, we are eager to write our current chapter of faith. We seek to steward the blessings with which we've been entrusted by being a blessing to the world, loving God and neighbor by creating a community where everyone can thrive in body, mind, and spirit. The prophet Jeremiah instructs the people of God in exile to seek the welfare of the city to which they have been sent, telling them, "It is in its welfare that you will find your welfare." Our individual fates are inextricably bound together. We believe that we belong to each other, no matter our varied beliefs, backgrounds, or circumstances. We believe, following our incarnate Savior, we are to embody the will of God through nurturing children, welcoming strangers, caring for the sick, feeding the hungry, doing justice, loving kindness, and walking humbly with our Lord. We know that the preaching and praises in our sanctuary will do nothing but anger God unless they become a source of light and life in the streets around our historic campus. As we enter our next century of ministry, we seek to partner with elected officials, with public servants, with nonprofit leaders, with business people, and any others interested in seeking the welfare of the city by creating a beloved community so that all of God's children can flourish. We hope to join you in fulfilling the mission of Greensboro to shape an inclusive future for equitable economic opportunity and sustainable, safe neighborhoods that offer all an exceptional quality of life. Together, may the Spirit lead us in making change that impacts everyone for good. We are praying for you, we are praying for our police department, and we are praying for our city. We are incredibly grateful that you took the time and the effort to recognize this milestone anniversary in the life of our congregation, and we continue to look to partner with you in the years ahead. Thank you.
Item E5 is a proclamation presentation to the Green Team Helping Hands, Inc. Day. I know we don't normally read proclamations, but we made an exception in this case. Whereas the Green Team Helping Hands, Inc. was established by Greensboro, North Carolina resident Ashley Benton in 2009, and whereas the Green Team Helping Hands, Inc. is a nonprofit organization that is an active frontline advocate for the homeless and hungry in Greensboro, North Carolina, and whereas the Green Team Helping Hands, Inc. accommodates families and homeless individuals with nourishing meals, clothing, and basic toiletries. And whereas the Green Team Helping Hands, Inc. initially provided resources for 18 people on a weekly basis, is currently serving more than 300 men, women, and children weekly. And whereas the extraordinary efforts and community contributions of the Green Team Helping Hands, Inc. is recognized by the syndicated daytime national program, The Jennifer Hudson Show, now therefore I, Mayor Nancy Vaughn, do hereby proclaim January 28, 2025, as the Green Team Helping Hands Day in the city of Greensboro and commend this observance to our residents. And the date of January 28, I believe, is the day that you will be on The Jennifer Hudson Show. So, you know, I'd encourage people in Greensboro to watch it or tape it.
I would like to thank city council and the mayor for this wonderful recognition. This is such an honor, so dear to my heart. I love the city of Greensboro. I was born and raised here. I'm still a resident here, and I will continue to do everything that I can to help the unhoused, anyone. I truly, truly appreciate this honor, and on behalf of the Green Team Helping Hands, we are very, very grateful to be recognized in such a huge way. So thank you so much, and I love the city of Greensboro. Thank you so much, so much, so much.
Thank you.
We got a day!
Item E6 is a resolution to adopt the 2025 City of Greensboro Departmental Events Recognizations and Programs.
Yes, Madam Mayor. So I would just like to tell the audience first that this is about 10 pages of information that will be at some point put on the website. I'm only going to read the titles of the engagements that are coming up in the next year. That way, it won't take another 45 minutes for this one resolution to be read. Whereas recognition of departmental events and dedicated work is an important component of the city of Greensboro's philosophy. Whereas the purpose of this calendar is to provide awareness of internal programs and special events. Whereas the city council of the city of Greensboro honors the dedication and commitment of the city of Greensboro staff and therefore recognizes and brings awareness to the following 2025 departmental events and program. In March, it will be the Lights Out Program. That is to make sure that the city buildings turn dark after dark so that birds don't fly into windows. So I did want to explain that one. We have also in March, North Carolina Arbor Day. We have Fix a Leak Week. I think you can figure out what that one is. In April, Wyland National Mayor's Challenge. And also in April, National Library Week, Earth Day, the Live Green Awards, Second Chance Month. In May, we have Drinking Water Week. We have Law Enforcement Week. We have Bike Month. And in June, we have Home Ownership Month. We also have Juneteenth. We also have Guilford Creek Week. In July, July is Parks and Recreation Month. September, Hunger Action Month. Library Card Sign-up Month. In October, we have Energy Efficiency Day and Code Compliance Officers Appreciation Week. We also have International Walk, Bike, and Roll the School Day, and also National First Responders Day, and Imagine a Day Without Water. In November, we have No Straw November, the World Day of Remembrance for Road Traffic Victims, and in December, we have National Homeless Persons Remembrance Day. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Greensboro that the city council of the city of Greensboro recognizes and observes the 2025 City of Greensboro Departmental Annual Events, Recognizations, and Programs, adopted this the seventh day of January 2025. And I would like to make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Moved by Mrs. Abuza Waiter, seconded by Mr. Holston. Counsel, please vote. And that passes eight to zero.
Thank you.
And then our last resolution is E7, a resolution to adopt the 2025 City of Greensboro Engagement Calendar. Mrs. Abuza Waiter?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas the creation of our annual engagement calendar is an integral part of the National Equal Employment Opportunity and Civil Rights Program. Whereas the purpose of the engagement calendar is to create an awareness of months, weeks, and days for groups, ethnicities, and cultures to celebrate. Whereas as an organization, the city of Greensboro stands in solidarity with communities around the world combating injustice and inequality. The city is committed to create a sense of belonging in our workplace and our community. Whereas we will be a part of the solution by addressing inequities that exist and by recognizing events on this calendar. The city will leverage the knowledge and expertise of staff to develop concrete ways to create equity in our community. Whereas the city of Greensboro wants to make official its annual recognition of nationally-recognized heritage events and celebrations such as January National Day of Service, Lunar New Year, February African-American Black History Month, and National Caregivers' Day. March, National Women's History Month, International Women's Day, National Employee Appreciation Day. April, the Sunflower Month for Hidden Disabilities, Cambodian Heritage Month, Take Our Children to Work Day. In May, Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, Jewish American Heritage Month, Older Americans' Month, and National Military Appreciation Month. In June, Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Queer, Questioning, Intersex, Asexual History Month, Juneteenth Celebration, Caribbean American Heritage Month. And in July, National Disability Independence Day. In August, Women's Equality Day. In September and October, Hispanic Heritage Month and Greensboro Pride. In October, National Disability Employment Awareness Month, Indigenous Peoples' Day, World Mental Health Day, and in November, National American Indian Native American Heritage Month. And that's all I have. So therefore, be it resolved by the city of Greensboro, the Greensboro City Council, oh, I'm so sorry, there is another page. I think we've all had problems with pages today. There is also in November, International Men's Day, National ERG Day, Transgender Day of Remembrance, and in December, the International Day of Persons with Disabilities and International Human Rights Day. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Greensboro that the city of Greensboro 2025 Equity Calendar is hereby adopted on this, the fifth day of December, and adopted this seventh day of January 2025. I would like to make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Second. Moved by Mrs. Abuza Waiter. Seconded by Mr. Holston. Counsel, please vote. And that passes eight to zero.
Mayor Kay, I will help you read that.
Huh?
Because I would like to share it in those engagement.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I don't. Yeah.
Read that.
So that is the end of our presentation items. Before we move on to our next business item, I do want to ask Trey to give us a brief update on public safety and the concerns that we have.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Chief John Thompson's here. I've asked him to come tonight, and as he approaches the podium, you know, we want to acknowledge that it has been a very trying start to our year. As a former police officer, you know, it is unimaginable when you lose one of your own. You know, a lot has been said, and we're approaching this week when we will have the funeral of Officer Haran, who was a tremendous hero for our community. But I do want to take a quick moment as a city manager to acknowledge the professionalism. Myself and Assistant City Manager Harold and, you know, our communications strategist, Eric Chilton, went out to the scene that day. And I've got to tell you, as a police officer, as a police officer, I was a supervisor, I was a commander, I saw a tremendous amount of professionalism. I saw people with extreme emotions because they had lost one of their own, but at the same time, everybody from those who were non-sworn police officers.
Because I would like to share it in those engagement passes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I don't.
Yeah.
So, I would have helped. Read that.
Um, so, that is the end of our presentation items. Before we move on to, um, our next business item, I do want to ask Trey to give us, um, a brief update on public safety and the concerns that we have.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and council members. Uh, Chief John Thompson's here. I've asked him to come tonight. Uh, and as he approaches the podium, uh, you know, we want to acknowledge that it has been a very trying start to our year. As a former police officer, uh, you know, it is unimaginable when you lose one of your own. You know, a lot has been said, and we're approaching this week when we will have the funeral of Officer Haran, who was a tremendous hero for our community. But I do want to take a quick moment, uh, as a city manager, to acknowledge the professionalism. Uh, myself and Assistant City Manager Harold and, uh, you know, our communications strategist, Eric Chilton, went out to the scene that day. And I've got to tell you, as a police officer, as, I was a police officer, I was a supervisor, I was a commander. Uh, I saw a tremendous amount of professionalism. I saw people with, uh, extreme emotions, uh, because they had lost one of their own. But at the same time, uh, everybody from those who were non-sworn police officers to those who, uh, were crime scene, um, investigators, we oftentimes don't think about those folks who have to go into the spaces that nobody ever sees. Uh, and for them to have to, to, to do their professional work, um, and it's one of their own family is, uh, is, again, is unimaginable. But I want to take a moment to acknowledge their professionalism. In the following days, unfortunately, we've had, uh, other incidents that people have lost their life in our community. Uh, I'm one of, one of the things I've asked Chief Thompson to talk about was, uh, to give you all as council, uh, but also to talk to our community about the context of those incidents, uh, and remind the community of the importance that, you know, we have to work together, uh, as, you know, obviously, uh, from the city manager's perspective, and, and you all are tremendous advocates. Uh, I do want to take a moment for anybody watching. Uh, someone did ask me this. What does our city council think about, uh, and does our city council ask about, uh, the violence that's happening? And I want to tell the community that, yes, our city council does. Uh, they're very engaged and they're very concerned. So, I want to thank you all for that. Uh, but also, we need help from our community and our community partners. So, Chief, if you wouldn't mind, uh, give us an update on, on where we are. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and, and members of council. Just wanted to, to take an opportunity to update you that we, uh, obviously had a, a difficult, uh, end of last year, losing an officer. And, uh, unfortunately, over the two weeks that followed that, uh, we've lost four other members of our community. And, um, I know, uh, when we lose an officer, that seems to gain a lot of attention in the community, in the public. It seems to be a story that's, uh, gains a lot of attention. And I just stand before you today to say that, um, you know, we will honor that officer Thursday at a service. But, you know, my heart is just as heavy for those four individuals that lost their lives and those families that are suffering along with the Haran family and, uh, along with the, the Police Department. Uh, unfortunately, we've seen that we're not immune to violence. And we have members of our community that are not immune to violence. And it's, it's just, it's not acceptable. And I can tell you that even after losing Officer Haran, that we have not stopped working tires, tire, tirelessly for the community to address violence. Um, you know, we were fortunate enough to be able to take the individual who killed Officer Haran into custody within a few hours. Uh, we've also done the same for two additional cases that have happened in our community. And one thing I want to highlight that City Manager Davis brought up is the fact that, uh, in one of those instances specifically, it was the community that stepped forward, that worked with the police officers on the scene, those detectives working the case, that resulted in the identification and arrest of the suspect in that violence. Now, I think that's great. That, that's wonderful. We need the community to do that. What I want to do is ask the community to let's work together to prevent that violence from occurring in the first place. Uh, I think we've made great strides over the last few years, especially coming out of COVID, connecting back with our fam, um, with the families, not only impacted by violence, but the communities that are impacted by violence. There's a number of things that we're doing to, to work to address that. Um, I have Chief Alston here in the room, who's coordinating with, hopefully, starting next week, that we will be going out into the communities, engaging again with the communities. I know when I first took, took over my position as chief, I made a call to the communities, saying, "We need your help. We need programs. We need nonprofits. We need community-based organizations that will help fill the gap with the Police Department." Uh, and we've seen some successes in that. We need more of that. We need more involvement. We need more engagement from the community. Uh, I'll just say that when the community does not accept this violence, it will go away. And we want to do everything we can to empower and support communities not to accept violence in their neighborhoods and communities. So, I, I would just encourage you as council and the influence that, that you have and anybody that is watching here today, um, to engage with us as a police department, uh, engage with other organizations that are doing the work right now in the community. We have a phenomenal, uh, department here with the Office of Community Safety that is a supplement to the Police Department in addressing crime in the community. Um, you know, we were, we have a model that will work. I know it will work. When we look at the last two weeks, there's a, a question is, is it working? Are we doing everything we need to do? I, I think we are. Um, we were up in Washington DC not three weeks ago. Uh, Chicago, Philadelphia, and the Greensboro Police Department were at the White House talking on a panel on Office of Community Violence and how do we, how do we address violence in our community? And we were an example for other communities across the country to look to, to how we're addressing violence. So, I know we've seen a spike here recently, uh, in, in the last two weeks, uh, to include one of our own officers. But I assure you, with that tragedy, our officers are working harder than ever to address violence in the community. We're continuing to connect with our community. Uh, and we would just ask for your help in whatever way possible to help us to continue forging those relationships and making those connections.
Chief, could you address, uh, staffing levels? I know that there is a concern out in the general community as far as GPD being understaffed. And I know that you have made tremendous strides. Could you address that?
Yeah, I will, I will say, I have not made those tremendous strides. I, I give all of that credit to council. Um, when we had this issue, when we proposed some recommendations, council stepped up, increased that compensation and benefits to our officers. We are authorized 651 sworn police officers and 127 professional staff employees. Um, right now, we have 81, we, we say operational vacancies. Um, that means there's 81 positions without a full-time officer, either in the street, as a detective, or in some assignment. But we have 30 that are currently being assigned out-of-field training, 27 in our academy. And we have 11 that are hired, waiting for our next academy or in a lateral process. So, we are right now, hard vacancies at about 12 for the department. Twelve.
Twelve.
And, and in comparison, I won't call out any other cities. There was a news article about a other, another triad city that's struggling with nearly 100 vacancies in their organization. Um, so, this, this is not, um, it's, it's very uncommon for us to have the staffing levels that we have.
And while you say we've got 12 hard vacancies, um, GPD, you have also instituted other programs to help bridge that gap. For instance, the, um, civilian traffic enforcement. I believe that, um, when you originally proposed that, it was estimated that it would be about 17,000 man-hours, police hours that would be transferred to non-sworn, um, people. And you've got the program up and running. And so, that's about another eight officers that no longer have to go out and, um, write reports for accidents without physical injury. So, that has, um, also, um, impacts your vacancy rating because you're able to put people in, in a higher priority call. Um, additionally, the B-HART team has been extremely successful. And what that has done is it has allowed police to leave, um, a scene sooner than having to sit through, um, and really do something that they're not trained to do when it comes to behavioral health or, or drug overdoses, to be able to hand it off to B-HART, which is not, um, it's not actually funded through the Police Department. That is through the Office of Community Safety. So, that has an impact, too. When you take those things into consideration, we're probably just about even at this point. I would say, you and I have had the conversation that maybe the sworn capacity needs to be larger because we've grown and we have more people coming in. And so, I assume that in the next budget, you may come back to us with a, a larger, um, sworn officer, uh, number. But we also have the grant that GPD and the city of Greensboro was able to secure, which, maybe you could speak to that?
Yeah, the, the, the grant that we were awarded was a COPS grant. And, uh, if you go back to the mid to late 90s, maybe early 2000, they had referenced them as Clinton COPS because of President Clinton at the time really pushed that program out. Um, and so, what that, that COPS grant allows us to do is to fund up to 30 positions where the federal government will pay for 75% of those positions for three years. And so, um, and I know we're, we're getting into, to budget discussions, and I'm, I'm not going to step on city manager's toes with any of that. Um, but that, that is a priority for us because we know that, um, as we continue, there are two priorities in our community. We see violent crime as a priority, but our community also has traffic concerns as a priority.
Absolutely.
And those 30 positions, if we're allowed to, to support those in our upcoming budget, would be directed towards those two priorities. That's what they would be, uh, those positions would be utilized for. So, um, that is a priority for us. I, I don't ever like to say we want to, the only way we can address things is through adding positions and adding people and throwing bodies at it. But I think we're working as smart and as hard as we ever have as an organization right now, with our staffing, with the programs, with B-HART, with GMAP, with our Crime Gun Unit that was established. A lot of these things, um, are, are really making us very effective.
And I do want to say, we, we just got the year-end statistics. And while the last two weeks have been horrific, um, year-to-date for, uh, '23 versus '24, homicides were down 42%. And I think we have to recognize that. Gun seizures are also, they were up 14%. Um, GPD was able to get 1,769, um, guns off the street, which I think is a huge number. And there is a, another category called violent arrests. And I think that people, um, misconstrue what that means. Our, the violent arrest numbers were up 18%, and that's actually a good thing because that means that GPD was able to make the case, file charges, and arrest the person. 18% more last year than the year before. It doesn't mean that there were more violent incidents. It means that they were able to make more arrests in relation to the incidents in '23 and '24. So, I think it's, people, when they look at that number and it says, um, violent arrests, they automatically think that that means that the violence was up that much. And that was actually the closure rate.
Yeah.
And so, I think that's something that we can celebrate.
And I, and I do want to, to make note of one thing. You know, we did have a reduction in homicides last year as opposed to the year before that. Um, it, it's, in my mind, it's kind of hard to celebrate when you set a record and then you're lower the next year. But when you look at the number of homicides opposed to the last six or seven years, we were still almost 20% below that average across the past six or seven years, which is, which is pretty significant. One thing we saw last year and we're working to address now is those aggravated, uh, sorry, the domestic violence homicides as well as aggravated assaults. Um, that trend started two years ago. It continued last year. We're working with the Family Justice Center as a, as well as evaluating all of our practices, policies, reporting procedures to make sure we're not missing some opportunity, uh, from a phone call about a domestic to any kind of an incident where we could provide some intervention to, to maybe drive those numbers down related to domestic violence. When you talk about end-of-year numbers from last year, we were up about 3% in our aggravated assaults. We were up almost 45% in domestic aggravated assaults, and that's what's really driving that number. So, uh, and unfortunately, one of the last four homicides was actually domestic-related. So, that is something that we are looking at. Uh, when we have a spike in violence or a spike in crime, we look at trends. We look at what is, what are driving those trends. We look at specific incidents. Uh, and so, domestic violence is going to be an area that we focus on coming into this year.
Thank you.
And Chief, um, first, I, I just wanted to mention, you mentioned domestic violence, and I know how well you all work with the Family Justice Center. I'm on, on their executive committee, and we've just gotten a lot of reports about that. And we're trying to figure out what can we, as the executive committee, do to assist the Family Justice Center as well and all the organizations? And also, um, you know, I want to say that Crime Stoppers is a good avenue. Uh, I'm also on the board of Crime Stoppers and, and I'm advocates for those, too, because, you know, uh, as you said, we need the community to help. But my specific question for you is, what can we as a council do to help you now or in, in the very near future? What would help you the most?
Uh, I, I think as we come into the new budget year, my priority would be focused around those, uh, COPS positions. Uh, and the opportunity, that would allow us to expand in areas to, one, address violent crime, but also address what we have heard is overwhelmingly the number-one concern from the community, and that's traffic.
Thank you.
I think we get a lot of, of questions about the visibility of officers. Will that help with that as well?
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
So, Chief, when you talk about traffic, because I do hear a lot of people complaining that they don't see anybody. And so, um, cars are running red lights, um, like they're green now. Um, so, and sometime I'm sitting and I don't see anybody. Um, so, I know we've helped you add staff, and then they've added the traffic. Um, where, where are they? How, how are they situated? How, where are they located? I mean, I, I'd like to see more. Certainly understand, um, you know, the money, and that was important, and we did that. Um, but I think it was to also make sure that we did fill those positions. Not that we want to over-saturate or over-monitor an area, people. We're not looking at monitoring just people, but in areas where people do want to feel safe.
Yeah, you know, I, the car I drive is a Tahoe. It doesn't look anything like a police vehicle. Uh, and probably once a day, I get my doors blown off by somebody speeding by me, running a red light. Uh, and so, I, I, I see it out there. Uh, one thing we had to do as part of our strategy about a year and a half ago is we had to shrink several of our discretionary units down so that those officers could fill the patrol function because we needed to make sure when somebody called 911 that we were going to get an appropriate response. Um, our hope is with these 30 positions, we could supplement, create a second traffic squad, and even a third traffic squad, which their only focus would be to be on the roadways enforcing traffic laws, being visible. Uh, and, and again, to your point, it's not about overpolicing. Uh, sometimes just stopping a car and letting them know that they're speeding raises that heart rate enough and teaches them a good enough lesson that, that changes behavior. Um, right now, our focus has been primarily on making sure we were appropriately staffed in patrol and then addressing violent crime. And we really, um, over the last year, through our, uh, surveys, through our Zen City surveys, overwhelmingly, the majority of feedback we get is, is traffic-related. The only way we're going to change that behavior is to be visible and to be on the roadways, um, enforcing those, those laws.
Yeah, because I think one of the most recent accidents where the guy was on the scooter, if they say, racing up and down, ran in the road, turned the corner, ran smack into the car at Rocky Knoll, threw him about 40 feet. Probably just car riding up and down through there or riding there would have, may have prevented it. Luckily, he didn't die, so I guess he's a Superman kind of person, thankfully. But, um, those types, uh, of events I hear about a lot. And then the first question is, well, where's the police? And so, y'all got them. Um, so, I want to just make sure that we focus on that. Two, it's important. Like you say, maybe just a stop and, you know, then send them on their way. Doesn't have to be a ticket. Doesn't have to be any of that that creates any kind of economic burden. But just awareness, I think, is very important. So, how does the Real-Time Crime Center help you? Has that helped?
It will not really, um, be a huge benefit as it relates to traffic enforcement because they're not visible in the community. Uh, they have been instrumental in how we're addressing violent crime. Um, you know, we tap into videos, not getting specific related to, to the homicides, but one of our recent- one of our recent homicides was captured on video in an apartment complex that is, is really what helped solve that case. So, um, and will make it a strong case. So we continue to grow in the Real Time Information Center. Uh, we're adding new businesses, new apartment complexes, um, new properties all the time. And again, um, it's not about what I think over policing. It's not about, you know, more bodies necessarily. For me, it's working smart first, um, as well as working hard. And the Real Time Information Center allows us to work smart, utilizing and leveraging technology to do that. So it wouldn't really help in the traffic area, but it absolutely helps in our violent crime.
Well, I, I think that's important too. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Um, I want to say a couple of things. You know, when you look at what we're seeing out there, um, there's no question, and Trey's heard from me, Andrea's heard from me, um, it's very concerning. Not just traffic. I drive, I basically drive Elm Street to my office and there's typically a wreck every day. Cone in Elm is one of the worst. And I see that, but going back to the violent crimes and going back to the domestic disputes and that you've seen, um, I want to make sure folks understand that GPD can't do all of that. And it's not all GPD's fault. It's part of an ecosystem. And when you have this ecosystem, when you, when you arrest somebody, um, and an officer goes to court and the court doesn't punish them for their arrest that they did, that's a problem. I heard a case last week where a gentleman shot and killed a domestic partner, got ten years, got out of jail that day, went to get another gun and shot and killed somebody else. It's a court system too. So we can have the best practices and the best police department in the world, but if the ecosystem is broken, and I submit to you that it is, that continues to hurt everything. And so I don't know, and, and Trey and I talked about this last week a little bit about how do we work better with our court system? Because I can only imagine, I think about, um, you know, if I was an officer and you had a great case, you put it forward, there's no question, and then the courts get lenient or just dismiss it, um, when it's an obvious case. The fact that some folks that, um, you know, have shot and killed people over twelve months ago, haven't seen the light of day of a court, it's a problem. You can't even get domestic courts. Like, we've got to figure that system. It's not the city. And it's not, it falls on GPD though, because it all ends up on y'all's lap. How many repeat offenders are making these cases? And you talk about arrest, the, the stated that I've seen, that the person that, um, killed Officer Haran was arrested seventeen times. That doesn't mean he was put in jail. He was arrested and let go. He got out, only to do the ultimate disaster by killing a father.
Um, I think Andrea wants to comment on that.
I don't think he had been arrested seventeen times. He may have had some minor things in Wilmington, but nothing, um, not seventeen arrests. And we had actually reached out to, to some other local agencies to see if he was under investigation for anything. It's my understanding he was not. I'll let the chief provide any additional comment on that.
I think that was a mis, that was a misreport.
I'll, I'll accept that. How many people that shot and killed somebody in twenty-twenty-four had a previous record? Let's just state that.
I bet more than half.
I bet more than half. And maybe I picked the wrong example, but the example still exists. And I would argue that these domestic disputes, and maybe they don't end up, and I've said often, that many of our criminals, many of our folks that are, uh, extremely violent that want to shoot somebody, luckily for us, they're bad shots. Because we'd have a lot more homicides, um, because when we get those emails and it said non-life threatening, if they were good shots, we'd have more homicides. And so how many of those had previous records? So the court system, you know, I want your officers to know that you are running best practices. You just gave an example of being in DC. You have made arrests. You are working collaborative with folks, not only, you, you think about, um, you know, the person that was arrested two hours down the road, uh, was it Johnston or Duplin County? And working and collaborating. So, you know, I just want your, your women and men to know that it doesn't just fall on your shoulders. There's an ecosystem there from, from, you know, birth to existence. And if you're arrested and you do something, you get a slap on the hand, um, or dismissed, and it comes back to y'all, you keep arresting the same people, that's not fair to you, it's not fair to the community, and that's something that needs to be fixed.
And just about every judge ran unopposed.
It's unbelievable. And so you're addressing those violent crimes, you, you know, it is systemic. Traffic, you know, I remember how many, you know, you think about how many miles of streets we have in the city limits of Greensboro. And it's hard to have an officer on every street corner or on every street.
I think it's twelve hundred miles.
I remember fifteen years ago, probably, there was a, a, a person that, on Elm Street, guy came out of the club, shot four times down February One Street, luckily didn't kill anybody, and an officer was on the opposite corner. So just because you are visible rarely means that somebody is going to pay attention. And so I just want you to know, um, I appreciate the job that you're doing. I am concerned. Um, you know, I am concerned about the violence. I, I, I don't think it's a Greensboro thing. I think it's a, um, a worldwide thing. Um, I don't know how to stop it. Um, I, I'm hoping you do. But I want you to know, and you're, you know, the women and men that, that work with you to know that you have my unwavering support. And we can, we'll do whatever we can as a body to support you. And just know that I know it doesn't fall just on GPD. So thank you and your, and your team for everything you do.
Thank you. And just, just a brief comment, you know, we were having those conversations now in the department about the court system and issues that we face with that. And we're having them, uh, as triad chiefs as well as across the state because it is, it is an issue, um, that has really came out of, uh, George Floyd and COVID. And that, that pendulum swung so far one way, uh, and now it, it's starting to swing back the other way in terms of accountability and, and how do we hold folks accountable? Uh, and, and I, I agree, I don't think we need to lock up the college kid who shoplifts. That's, that's not an appropriate place for them to be. But I also don't think we should have somebody charged with homicide who's out on an ankle bracelet
Right.
being monitored. I don't, I don't think that's the appropriate.
The key word you said, and I wrote it down, and I, I can't, I don't have my glasses on, so I can't see it, but is accountability. We, we hold y'all accountable all the time. The citizens hold us accountable. We need to hold the court systems and the judge accountable. And the fact of that we've got all these judges running unopposed, how about paying attention to them? So, thank you. Accountability is the key word.
And then the only other thing I will say is that the, the community is absolutely critical for us to be successful. And I've, I've said this before in, in front of media and the community that we can't do it alone. We're not going to solve it alone as a police department, and the community's not going to solve it alone. The only way we're going to be successful is working together. I think we're, we're getting there. I think we can be better working with our community. And, and that's what I really hope to see coming into this new year is that we can build some better relationships. I, I, I don't think we're strained at all, but, uh, we need to empower our communities a little bit more as a police department. We need to make sure they know they're supported by us, that when they call us, we're going to respond and take their, their calls seriously, that we're listening to them, that we're not in neighborhoods to over police, that we're there to be smart, address those that are committing crimes in our communities and neighborhoods. And, and hopefully, as we continue to have those conversations, we continue to show up in spaces and meet with them, that, that relationship will continue to grow and build. And I think once we do that, I mean, the, the success will follow.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Andrea.
Uh, Chief, uh, I, I join my fellow council members in saying that the, the news of the past two weeks has been very troubling. I also note that in the past, and even just now, you have stated that we're not going to be able to police our way out of this situation. You also shared a little earlier that, um, I'd be more specific, so to speak, you talked about the Office of Community Safety, uh, looking at the prevention, the intervention, the, the mitigation of. I believe that, that a, and an enhanced investment in what those teams are doing. And I know sometimes there are some, some criticisms of those teams because it's very difficult to prove a negative. You know, just how impactful are they? Uh, you could say that the numbers we saw last year, the, those homicide, homicide numbers down some forty, forty-two percent were probably impacted by the work that they're doing. What is your thought about an increased investment in the work that those groups are doing? I know there are other things going on, this B-HAR and, and this traffic safety and, and the staffing. But as far as those groups and getting to the core issues, getting to the preventative side of it, not necessarily the symptomatic side of it, but the preventative side of it, what would an, an increased investment, or, or could you use an increased investment in those organizations?
Absolutely. Um, you know, before Letitia was ever in her role over the Office of Community Safety, we were having conversations of, of what that office and department could look like and how they could support the police department in our efforts. And I one hundred percent stand behind her and, um, and support the efforts that are coming out of that office. And, and I will go back to the, the panel we were on at, at the White House some three weeks ago. And I tell folks about that and it's kind of funny because they're like, you have Chicago, Philadelphia, and then Greensboro. And it's, it's not, and it's not related to the violent crime that's occurring in those cities. It's related to the innovation that's occurring in those cities and the programs specifically tied to an Office of Community Safety, how you're trying to address crime, not through only an enforcement model, but through getting into communities, utilizing communities to address crime. And, and that's just something that i- it's new across the country. And I do believe in it. I, I do believe it can be successful. So, um, you know, wha- whatever investment is needed to support that, I would absolutely support that. And, um, I just think that it's, it's so new that it's, it's hard to, to know how successful it can be. But I, I completely believe in, in the philosophy of it and, and support that program fully.
Thank you.
Okay. Chief, thank you very much, and we look forward to those budget discussions.
Thank you.
Now we are going to, um, open the floor, council floor, for nominations for Mayor Pro Tem. I know that it pains us all to have to make this appointment. It's, um, you know, Yvonne was a very special person and she means a lot to everybody here on this council and everybody in the city. So I know that this is, um, a difficult time for us all. I do want to talk a little bit about what the role of Mayor Pro Tem is, and I will say that it's largely ceremonial. I get invited to a lot of places to speak or to do a presentation, and when I am unavailable, it's usually the Mayor Pro Tem who is contacted next. In my absence, a Mayor Pro Tem would have some responsibility. I sign just about every contract that comes through the city that's over three hundred thousand dollars. That's probably a few hundred contracts a year. It's been made a little bit easier now by some of them are going to DocuSign. But for those that are time sensitive, um, a Mayor Pro Tem would sign those if I was out of the, if I was out of the state and unable to sign them. Obviously, in my absence, the Mayor Pro Tem would oversee, oversee the meeting, um, run it just like I'm doing now, um, and then sign the minutes when those are done, um, through the clerk's office. Those are the main things that the Mayor Pro Tem does. I will say that it's assumed that the Mayor Pro Tem is kind of like a vice president, and if something happens to the mayor, that the Mayor Pro Tem becomes mayor. And that is not the case. If something happened to the mayor, God forbid, um, then it would be up to the council to vote on who the mayor is, just like now council will vote on who the Mayor Pro Tem is. So that, that's kind of, um, Mayor Pro Tem civics one oh one. If you have any questions, you can ask Chuck.
I, I have comments. Are you ready?
Dr. Wells?
Uh, when this, this, um, situation presented itself, it's, I don't, I've never really heard of us losing a council member to death. So we, we're going to miss Yvonne. Yvonne, it was unique because she was the top vote getter at large. So it had been the tradition that the top vote getter would be the Mayor Pro Tem. When this position came open, I expressed my desire to be Mayor Pro Tem. But I want to say to everybody here, all my council members, is, this is not about me just wanting to be Mayor Pro Tem. It was about the, the last time we had a, um, council meeting, and we got another one today. We got this little flyer, and it talked about the big ideas for Greensboro, and it talked about our vision for Greensboro. And it's from our GSO twenty forty. So it's one of the goals there, one of the visions, and that's what we want the city to be like in twenty forty, is that we would, uh, be committed to equity, diversity and inclusivity. It's my feeling that we should show, that we should show that we are a community that recognizes diversity. So that was my reason. So I, I don't want anybody, I know Mary Kay is going to be nominated to be the Mayor Pro Tem, but it's not against Mary Kay, not anybody. I love all of it, but I do want to read what my thinking is. Traditionally, the at-large candidate who received the most votes was given the position of Mayor Pro Tem for the city of Greensboro. However, this unprecedented situation warrants a change of that tradition. I suggest that the council examine its vision for twenty forty when selecting the council member to serve in the Mayor Pro Tem position for the next twelve months. Our vision expresses what we as a community aspire to be in twenty years. It provides a common touch point for meaning, for making decisions and a consistent point of reference to manage changes in conditions in the future. We want these statements to be true in twenty forty. Vision one, Greensboro is the most desirable mid-sized city in America. Vision two, Greensboro is a green, greenest city in the southeast. Vision three, Greensboro is committed to equity, diversity and inclusivity. Vision four, we make history. Vision five, Greensboro is a city of inspiration and creativity where people and businesses thrive. Let's consider the ver, the wording of vision three and four. Vision three, Greensboro is diverse. We commit not just to diversity, but also inclusion, equitable participation and opportunity for those who live. for those who live, work, and go to school in Greensboro. Vision four, we make history. Greensboro honors and builds on its history and continues to make history as a forward-thinking city. This council has the opportunity to contribute to the vision for 2040. Every item we approve for businesses, zoning, rezoning, references the future, GSO 2040, we state. We believe the action to approve or deny to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 comprehensive plan. It is a fact that this city is a majority-minority city. I believe that its leadership should reflect that truth. Therefore, I suggest that a minority council member serve as a Mayor Pro Tem to demonstrate our embrace of the vision of our city and our commitment to equity, diversity, inclusivity. I can also, we can also make history because this has never been done before. This council has served and accomplished many things that have not been done before. We worked as a cohesive group and have shown concern for the city and its citizens when sometimes our decisions were not pleasing to our citizens, but we've been committed to doing what we think is best for now and for the future. We have our citizens' thoughts in that document that gives what they would like to see our city become. Things have not gone well for us on the crime scene, but we still have this vision written so that others can read it and run with it. I believe we have a chance to fulfill part of the vision tonight by showing our commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusivity, and making history. Therefore, I suggest that a minority member of our council become the Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Greensboro, North Carolina, for the remainder of this election cycle. I want you to know that it's not that I'm looking for any political position, I'm not running for anything, but I just believe that we should make history. We don't, when you look up here, we've always had a black person for the last years sitting here. When you look at our leadership now, it's not going to show that, and I just believe our city should have the leadership that shows our diversity. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Wells.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I speak?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Goldie Wells, for those words. I actually support what you're saying, and so let me explain why I support what you're saying and would nominate you to be our next Mayor Pro Tem. Several reasons. First of all, you come from the same district that our previous Mayor Pro Tem does, come from the east side of Greensboro, you're a black female. You would be the second black female Mayor Pro Tem that the city would see, and you're right, you're not going to run again, it's not a political position for you, but I think it sends a statement of being inclusive and being open-minded. Yes, traditionally, it has been the case that it's been that large, most high-vote getter, but every one of us up here vote on every single issuing item that comes before this council. We don't sit here and say, oh, I can't vote for that one because that's not, I have to vote for each and every one, sometime I'm a pro for it, sometime I'm against, but what we had with Mayor Pro Tem, who has left us now, Johnson, was a balance, balance from the east and a balance from the west, leader from the west, leader from the east. It brought a balance, and what I see is we need to continue that balance. We need to make sure that the citizens all know that sometimes it's not always about tradition. There have been traditions that we have stepped away from, the tradition of slavery, we walked away from because it was wrong and it had to go, but we also have the tradition of Thanksgiving, and so we all want to embrace and celebrate that. So there are good things and there are not-so-good things. Let's pull the good things out of what we now see to be something that's unprecedented and not necessarily following tradition, but to be bold, to be a thinker of change, to say, why not, Dr. Goldie Wells from District Two as our Mayor Pro Tem, why not? As opposed to always, we think like, oh, well, shouldn't do that. No, we need to start thinking more positive. We don't know what next year's going to hold up here at all. The whole leadership is going to look so different, it's scary, but we know what's here now, and no, we don't always agree on everything, but I think we have to be more broad-minded and think outside the box. It's not that I dislike anyone. Mary Kay, I think you're a wonderful individual, I always have believed so, but I don't think that we just have to go with the status quo, and so I support you, Dr. Wells, in your thinking. I think you love this community, you love this city, just like all of us in our own different ways, but you do offer a consistency of the fact that you've served just as long as probably Mrs. Boozerwaiter as well, but you have a heart for this community as well, and that's something that Yvonne had. You had a heart too, you have a heart for the community to serve everyone, and because the system that we're in is designed as a district and an at-large system, does that mean you should be preluded because you don't come in the at-large box? But you are a representative of this city, and you represent it well, you represent us well, and I think you sitting in that seat, because again, as the mayor said earlier, just because you're Mayor Pro Tem doesn't mean you become the mayor. If it came up and the mayor decided she wanted to take early retirement, you could vote for me to be mayor. Ooh, that would scare you, wouldn't it? It would scare me too, trust me, and I don't want it, ever, but I think that we have to sometime think differently when we consider things, so, and that's what I want to consider, Dr. Wells, and I make that.
Thank you.
Do you want to speak?
Was that a motion?
I am making a motion, but I didn't know if you wanted to speak first.
Was it a motion?
It is a motion.
I'll second that motion, and I second that motion because, you know, the comments that I've heard from Dr. Wells and Sharon Hightower, many of them I agree with, it has nothing to do with the individuals, I'm sorry, it has nothing to do with the individuals, and I know that Mary Kay is going to be nominated also. It simply has to do with the work that Dr. Wells has done for the community over the period of time that she's done it, with an expertise and a wisdom that many times she has led us on council through her sage words and advice and counsel, and even though in a sense, we're talking about a practice versus a policy, what we've done in the past is we have selected someone who was an at-large candidate, and in a sense, I'm arguing against myself as an at-large candidate, but to that point, I can see the leadership that Dr. Wells could provide us, and also that Mary Kay can provide us. It's such that any council member has the opportunity to serve as Mayor Pro Tem, and in this case, listening to what Dr. Wells has said, I would support her candidacy for Mayor Pro Tem for the city of Greensboro.
Thank you. You know, I have to say, this is a really difficult decision to make because we all get along quite well, and there is a genuine fondness for everybody here on this council, so it's difficult when we know that it's going to be a divided vote. I think Goldie is an amazing person, and I think I'm a better person because of Goldie, but I will support Mary Kay for this, and I think there's a reason why it's been tradition that it's an at-large person, and it's because the mayor is the mayor of the entire city. The Mayor Pro Tem has to be the Mayor Pro Tem of the entire city, and at this point, there's no, there's no time to get to know areas of the city that they haven't necessarily been in. District people typically stay within their district, they go to other things. I know that the districts between Sharon and Goldie get pretty blurred at times, but, you know, being mayor, you have to be able to move in spaces throughout the entire city and do it right now. I mean, so it's not even like there's an election right now where people can get to know different parts of the city. Whoever is Mayor Pro Tem will be Mayor Pro Tem tomorrow. That means there's really no learning curve, there's no reaching out to different communities throughout the city, and I think that's very important because of the immediacy, that we need somebody to start that job tomorrow. It is a very, very difficult decision because I know that Dr. Wells is an extremely competent person and that she loves this city, but I believe that deferring to at-large is there for a reason, it is tradition, it is not by ordinance, but I think that there is a reason why that has been the way it's been for a number of years.
To make it clear that my argument is about vision versus tradition. Now, what you're saying, because it is a short span, we just have a year for this to, for a person to serve, but it's just an unusual situation, and because I thought it was a short period, then the change could be made so that we can move forward with the vision for the city. We're going to have to move forward, and we're going to have to show, to have something on paper when it comes to that 2040. People went to sororities, they went to small groups, they went all over the city for the, before it was adopted, so I think that we need to be aware of it, since we're aware of it of every motion that we make and every decision, then we need to be intentional about it, and let's not get stuck in tradition on everything.
Nancy, and then Tammy.
You know, again, this is, this is difficult because we're all friends and colleagues and associates, and we will remain that, you know, and I have enormous admiration and respect for Goldie, I've told her that, I think, a number of times, but, you know, I think the points that the mayor made are really quite valid. Our mayor and our at-large candidates are voted on by all citizens in this city, and in Mary Kay's case, she and I came onto council the same year, 2011, so we're serving our 14th year on this council together. Mary Kay is an amazing person also. She, I feel as though she and Nancy as well probably too, know almost every inch of this city. They are everywhere, and so I think that that's really a valid point in making this choice about the Mayor Pro Tem. So I'm going to, I'm going to support that as well. I think it has been our tradition in the past, I think it has a strong rationale, and I think Mary Kay has dedicated herself certainly over this 14 years to this city, and so, but I still love Goldie.
Tammy?
Councilwoman Hightower spoke of tradition and the roles tradition plays, and sometimes we continue traditions and sometimes we change traditions and do something different. My personal belief is that if a tradition is the right thing, then you continue it. I feel like the Mayor Pro Tem, normal tradition of being selected from an at-large member is the right tradition. I do believe that it's something, the Mayor Pro Tem position serves the entire city. They are elected and chosen by the entire city. The city, all districts of the city, have chosen Mary Kay to represent them, and as Councilwoman Hoffman said, you won't find anybody more places throughout the entire city than Mary Kay. She is everywhere and the city knows her. For that reason, I think it's appropriate that she be the Mayor Pro Tem, and I'll be voting accordingly. Thank you.
Is this as awkward for y'all as it is for us? Is this as awkward for them as it is for us? Talk about, y'all pick on us for doing back-room deals, well, this is one that I wish we were doing back-room so we could hammer this out between ourselves. You know, I listen to everybody, diversity and inclusion and opportunity and building on history, and while I respect Dr. Wells' thought process on this, this council, this city staff, and this community has done that, is doing that, is achieving that, and is going to continue to achieve that, whether this vote comes down to whatever. I believe in our city, I believe in the direction we're going from a diversity, opportunity, inclusion, and quite frankly, in the history, we need to do an even better job of it. If you think about the diversity that has happened in this city, when you think about the Civil Rights Museum, when you think about Bennett College, when we honored North Carolina A&amp;T, Women's College, now UNCG, the things that have happened in this city of our history and the diversity, we're achieving it. One vote does not break any of that, it does not break that vision, and that's my thought process. Now, I have a unique relationship with Dr. Wells. A few decades ago, she made a very important decision. She was working in the Statesville-Irredell County School System, and she made a decision in the superintendent's office to hire a wonderful woman to be a teacher, and I thank you for that. That's my mother, who's probably watching. I cry because of her. You know, we talk about how we serve, our votes count the same up here, no matter what your title is, our votes count the same. We serve together, we will still serve together, no matter any title. I guess I can say that because I'm like Sharon, I have no desire to be anywhere else but right here, but I have sat here and I've heard folks saying, well, that's, I wish I had that in my district, so I'm not going to vote for it because I want that in my district, and it gets district-related versus the over-encompassing at-large area when you do have to support the entire city, and I do think that's a distinct, you know, Yvonne, and it's hard to see that seat empty. A car was in a parking spot tonight, I didn't expect that. Yeah. A car was in a parking spot tonight. I didn't expect that. Yeah, but it's, because I'm, you know, it makes me, it helps me grieve going through this process. Yvonne's balance wasn't necessarily built on race, as much as it was her integrity and love for this city. The balance that she gave us, and y'all know, y'all sat up here, I sat up here for 12 years or more, I don't even know. You wouldn't think she was paying attention, because she probably wasn't. But damn if she wouldn't hit it right on point of what the community needed to hear. And the balance that Yvonne gave was just, it's not replaceable, at least probably not in my lifetime. And the word "heart" was used tonight, and how, you know, Dr. Wells, you do have a wonderful heart. And I used to sit where Tammy sits, my first term in 2007. I sat to Goldie's left, and boy, she would hit me, because I was really green then. All of us up here have a heart. We wouldn't do this if we didn't have a heart. I'm taking time away from my kids tonight because I love this city. Do I want to be Mayor Pro Tem? No, I'm good. But that doesn't mean that I don't have a heart to serve this city. And every vote, when we take a moment of silence, and I say my prayer, is that I will serve this city with the best honesty and integrity I can do. Whether you believe in me or not, that's what I believe in any decision I make. And so, you know, I agree with Mayor Vaughan's comments earlier. It has nothing to do with anybody. The fact that we're in a situation like this is really horrible, quite frankly. You know, the last four to five, six weeks have been really challenging. But, you know, I hate that we're doing, coming down to this. Like, sucks. But I do support the at-large position, because I know everywhere we go, Mary Kay is always there. She's accessible. She can sign checks if she needs to. And she's run the meetings. Yvonne, when she was Mayor Pro Tem, if Nancy or the Mayor Vaughan was out, Mary Kay would run them, mainly because Yvonne didn't want to. But it wasn't, and that's not it. It's just, that's what we're used to doing. And Mary Kay has stepped into that position prior to. And so, it's not necessarily tradition that I'm following. I'm following the fact of Mary Kay has represented the entire city and has been accessible to the entire city in her entire term. And that's my thought process. And I love you, Dr. Wells, and thank you for hiring my mama. I owe you, just not tonight.
So I think it can be said, this is the most awkward for me this evening, you know, because I do respect Dr. Wells, and I know that she knows that. And, you know, hearing all of these things, I kind of want to mention that, you know, Zach is 100% correct. About a year ago, and I don't think Yvonne knew anything was going to happen to her. None of us did. None of us expected this. But about a year ago, Yvonne started giving me all of her duties to do, as in, on a Sunday afternoon, I would get a phone call and said, you know, I don't feel like going down to this program. Can you go and present this proclamation at 3:00? You know, I would get that on a Sunday afternoon. And sure, Yvonne, you know, everyone wanted to do for Yvonne in the last couple of years. I think many of us saw that she was slowing down. But as Zach mentioned, she was still sharp as a tack. And so many of us have gotten very, very close to Yvonne. You know, I have to say that I feel like she adopted me into her family, and we've known the family since the 90s. And when I got on to being interested in council, she mentored me. She made me Chair of the International Committee of the City to get me involved. And then I was on the Human Rights Commission and several other committees and things. And it was just like, I feel like she was my true mentor. I would call her with any questions. And she'd tell me, you know, be accessible, be there for people. You know, people just want somebody to talk to, and they want you to help them find a solution or direct them to the staff who can assist them. Nine times out of 10, I would say, no, I would say 10 times out of 10, she was so wise in her words of advice, and those were so true. I've had people call me, and I haven't been able to help them. And they called back and say, at least thank you for trying. That was the way Yvonne did, and she trained that into me. You know, this is very awkward, because I know there's going to be a vote taken, and I wish we could all be unanimous on everything. But that's not the way it works. We all have our own opinions. We have our own feelings. Yvonne was an inspiration to me. And I believe that she believed in diversity, and she also believed diversity had many elements in it. We don't want to forget our international communities. We don't want to forget our Hispanic communities. She was really huge on including everyone. And I know that I can never fill her shoes. I wouldn't even try to. But I will certainly try to honor her and her legacy by, if I am elected as Mayor Pro Tem this evening, to keep doing the things that she would have been doing as it relates to council. I do want to say that, at the funeral, I think so many of us heard her children and her grandchildren. But there was one thing that stuck to me that almost each and every one said. Yvonne saw no color. She didn't care if you were black or white or brown. She would help you. And that's the way she taught me. So I will certainly try to honor her legacy by doing the best I can. And one thing she also said was, call me with your complaints, because that's how I learn as well. She said that. I went back and watched the tape of when she accepted Mayor Pro Tem, in August of 2022. And that's what she said. I thank you. I thank you not only for when we do good, but I also thank you for sending me your complaints. How else can we fix things if we are not aware? So that's what I encourage everyone to do. I know there's going to be a vote taken, and we shall see what happens. But I thank all of my council for the nice comments they've made about me. I just want to serve, and I want to serve like an Yvonne. And that's what I hope you will help me do. Thank you.
So we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Motion by Mrs. Hightower, second by Mr. Holston, to appoint Dr. Wells as Mayor Pro Tem.
So how do we, yes, are we just doing it by verbal? Because I don't, the screen hasn't moved.
Are we, yes, there is a vote screen?
Yes, ma'am. I was setting that up, if that's what you would like to do.
I do have a comment, though, quickly, Nancy. I do think, I need to say this. Race is in every element that we do. You cannot step away from race. Yeah, Yvonne said that. But the conversation she and I had, she was keenly aware, because I think all of us have had conversations with her. All of us have, in some way, gotten a phone call from her saying, can you go to this, or will you go to that? But race is something that, whether we agree tonight or not, it is something we cannot walk away from. When people look at me, that is the first thing they see. I don't care how gorgeous I am. They don't see my beauty, but they see my race. And so I just need for people to understand that. And I wanted to be clear on that.
Thank you. Counsel, please vote. Dr. Wells, it really pains me to hit the no button. Oh, I had a screen. Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes.
Yeah, let's do a verbal, because it's taken too long. Mrs. Thurm?
No.
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
I am a no. Mrs. Abusawater?
Yes.
And so that motion fails five to three. We'll take a voice vote on that. Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Thurm?
Yes.
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Mrs. Abusawater?
Yes.
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 And that passes eight to zero. And Dr. Wells, thank you for being so graceful.
Yes, thank you.
So we do, we do need to swear Mary Kay in. And then after, after the swearing in, we will take a brief, a very brief recess, because we still have to get to speakers.
I would like to ask my husband, my son, and his girlfriend to come forward, please. And they were in the audience whether or not I became Mayor Pro Tem. So I'm going to make that clear.
We don't have very, we don't have.
Please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand.
Excuse me, if we could be quiet, please.
And repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Mary Kay, I swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of North Carolina.
Of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
As Mayor Pro Tem for.
As Mayor Pro Tem for.
Of the city of Greensboro.
Of the city of Greensboro.
According to law.
According to law.
And according to the best of my skill and ability.
And according to the best of my skill and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem Abusawater.
We will, we will take a 10-minute break for the closed caption, and then immediately start with speakers from the floor.
Safety Town is a Greensboro institution. I even went to Safety Town when I was a little girl in Greensboro. Well, now there are eight sessions each summer in two locations, one at Lewis Center and one at Barber Park. Corporal, tell us about Safety Town. How long has it been around, and what are the goals?
So when Greensboro has been around, about 50 years. Our new location here at Barber Park, this is our third summer. So we're anxious and excited about getting it going. The kids love it out here. It's so much fun. We're out here right now at Safety Town. And this is where they get to ride the little cars, which you'll probably see over here. And we try to help them with the, stand on the right side of the road. Red light means stop. We have a railroad crossing to show them how to stop. We even have pedestrian crossing, so we work on crossing the street and things like that. So it's a great program.
When to cross, when not to cross, when to wait, all of that. But it's more than the town that we see right here.
It is. We have an inside curriculum, too. So the kids come out for two hours a day for two weeks. So they come out, and we'll do an hour inside, an hour outside. So one day may be fire safety. The Greensboro Firemen will come out, and they'll talk to you about, you know, stop, drop, and roll. They'll talk to you about having fire extinguishers, any kind of thing that you would need to know. And then they actually put on the whole fire suit so that kids can see how they are. Because if you're not aware of it, when they have their helmet on and then their air pack, they talk funny, and it's, you know, a Darth Vader kind of talk. So we need to let kids know not to be scared of that, to come to their voice. You know, they'll explain all that kind of stuff, how that would work. So we do that part inside, and then we come outside, and the fire truck's here, and they get to squirt the fire hose and have fun with that. EMS comes out, and she talks about why you would call 911, why you wouldn't call 911. They show you the inside of the ambulance and what you're going to be experiencing if you have to go in the ambulance. We do a poison safety. We do railroad safety. Colonial Pipeline comes in to talk about water safety. So it's something different every day.
It's a lot of fun. It's a great learning opportunity for, again, five and six-year-olds, right? And you don't work a whole lot with five and six-year-olds, not kind of in your normal routine.
Right. So everybody out here, all the officers that are working, we wear the uniform like mine, a little more relaxed uniform in the summer. And then we're all school resource officers during the school year. So it's nice to get these little five and six-year-olds that like police and want to be around you. And it's a nice refresher after a long school year.
And do you actually see some of your Safety Town graduates during the school year, in middle school and high school?
Yeah, definitely. So along with the five and six-year-olds that go through the program, there are volunteers who kind of help corral them. So there are five and six-year-olds in a group of maybe five or six. And then we have two or three volunteers that kind of help get them where they're supposed to be and go to the bathroom, you know, things like that. And those are all ages 12 to 17. So those are middle and high school kids. So those are all the kids we know from the school. So it's nice to be able to pick and choose who's a good representative of the school and who's going to be good to work with.
And those kids are earning, they're service learning hours at the same time as, you know, that feel-good experience about doing something good in their community.
And a lot of them are also Safety Town graduates. So after they have gone through Safety Town, they're always like, oh, I'm going to come back and be a volunteer. And they do. So.
Great. It's so great. You have been doing this how long?
I came in here 2016. So before that, back when I was first at the police department, they had off-duty, off-duty officers worked out here. So I'd worked it years ago. But then I came into the program in 2016.
What do you like most about it?
Oh, I love hearing the little kids' stories. They are just so funny. They are just so funny. They like to tell on their parents a lot, so that is fun. But they're just, it's just refreshing and they just think you're the greatest thing. And sometimes that's good to feel when you're just, sometimes people don't think we're the greatest thing. So it's nice to have that little innocent mind.
If you want your kids to make a stop at Safety Town, either as a participant or a volunteer, now is the time to register. Find out more about the program by going to safetowngreensboro.com. Inside the office building at 114 North Elm Street in downtown Greensboro, you'll find Zaytoun Mediterranean Grill. You'll come for the food. It's fresh, it's clean, it's organic, it's local, and you'll stay for the stories behind the food.
So I grew up in the Holy Land, you know, so we are family-oriented, you know. Meal is very important to us, you know. So we gather and everybody around the table and we centered and we eat together and we chat and this. And we are, we live in a very sustainable community and we, everything comes from within very small distance, everything local, and everything is delicious. Since I'm health coach and I'm really health-oriented about a lot of things, I try my best really to use the best ingredient to feed my customers because that's how I eat and I want my customer to eat healthy. So it's, we focus on food as medicine in general. Our restaurant started in 2000, actually. I came to America in 1989 to finish my master. But for some reason, we couldn't go back and I finished my master, but we stayed here. I have three children, so I have to do something and I never knew how to cook, really. You know, I went to college in Jordan University, finished my four-year college and, you know, how I lived college life and all of these kind of things. Went to Kuwait, I taught in Kuwait for many, many years, came in 1989. So we start going to the farmer market. From there, the seeds of Zaytoun started. And then I've become very health-oriented. I went to Duke, I finished my health coaching, and we started the restaurant. Well, Zaytoun means in Arabic, olives, and it's kind of universal language. We chose that because in Spanish, as Zaytoun, and Hebrew, zitim, Arabic, Zaytoun, so it's kind of everybody will understand it, so it's olives. Jodara, which is rice and lentil balaan with caramelized onion, is really very famous. It's, we've been doing it, I'm telling you, for almost 20 years. And people like it. First of all, it's vegetarian, vegan, it's kind of universal. For people who wanted to be vegetarian, it will be served with szeke. If it is vegan with no, you know, with no szeke, it's been in our culture for, I grew up eating it. And it's delicious, it's good, we like it. We eat it either with plain yogurt or with cucumber, which is the szeke. We eat it with cucumber and dill and all of these kind of things, or with salad, fine chopped salad. Again, everything, we used to eat local, you know, sustainable. So it is, it's very famous back home and famous here, and people like it. The soup is called carrot lentil. It's one of the dishes, we serve it here as Zaytoun. We use in our culture a lot of lentils because we grow it locally and people use it. So this carrot lentil soup, they used to do it traditionally from the rainwater. So rainwater, it has, it's, for some reason, it has different flavor. Specifically, they've done it this way. The molds, those, we use them for ma'amul. And ma'amul, it has, it has really very unique story because we use, we use those molds around the celebration of Ram. After we, as a Palestinian, we are, we are Muslim and Christian. So Muslim, they fast Ramadan and they celebrate, you know, after they break Ramadan, the Eid al-Fitr. So in that tradition, we use, you know, the ma'amul. And it's a dough, we make it and we mold it with those molds. And the Christian in Easter, the same thing they do. So it's very, you know, around that time of the celebration, traditionally, long time ago because it's a small community, it's not very big and no money cars and stuff like this. So you were sitting in, somewhere in your neighborhood, where in your house, and all the neighbors, they gather and they do, you know, the ma'amul. And all where you hear is just those molds, it's just like tick, tick, tick. They're just like, you know, it's a very beautiful memory. Those molds, very specific and it's really very unique. I look at food as food, it's very spiritual also. You know, if you put love into food and you serve it to people, people like it, I mean, feel it. So it's, we use pure ingredient and people, you know, for many years, they've been eating it and sensing it. So I take a pride about our philosophy and about our cooking and all of these kind of things, you know. People sense and use and like, so we've been doing it for almost 20 years now.
The city of Greensboro takes pride in the host of reinvestment activity taking shape in East Greensboro. Equitable investment on the east side has been an ongoing effort to enhance the quality of life for our residents, students, and visitors. A hub of recreation is evidenced through the downtown Greenway, which touches all walks in different ways. Construction continues on the final mile of this one-of-a-kind four-mile Greenway. The western branch winding from Smith Street to Spring Garden Street is expected to be open in the summer of 2025. The walking and biking Greenway connects at least a dozen neighborhoods, including Old Ashboro, South Side, Douglas Park, and the Dunleavy Neighborhood, all on the east side. There are more than $600 million in planned and completed projects along the downtown Greenway. This urban loop enhances quality of life with a variety of fitness classes, community walks, and an emphasis on public art, cementing Greensboro's reputation as a creative city. With the connections to the existing and planned trails in the city and the county, this loop is the center of the entire system and will one day connect us from all parts of the community and beyond. A future East Greensboro Greenway will connect the J. Douglas Galleon Depot in downtown to Barber Park. In collaboration with the city, NC DOT is developing a feasibility study for the route of the East Greensboro Greenway. The first phase of the Randleman Road Corridor enhanced transportation services and encouraged additional reinvestment on the east side. The city will work with a consulting firm to assist with drafting a plan for the southeast area, which spans approximately eight square miles. Recommendations based on significant public input will guide the future growth and development necessary to improve services and connectivity for a variety of established neighborhoods in the southeast area. The city is investing $3 million of American Rescue Plan funding to revitalize our oldest golf property with prominent ties to the civil rights movement. The Gillespie Golf Course Master Plan relies on the facility's historical and cultural relevance as a guide for future improvements. Additionally, we applaud the PGA Reach Foundation for awarding a $250,000 grant to commission a mural of the Greensboro Six. These courageous men integrated the Gillespie Golf Course in 1955. The city is taking a new approach to meet the needs of the East Greensboro community in a way that has never been done before. Greensboro Public Libraries and Parks and Recreation have set out to create a centralized community hub, the Windsor Chavis Noco Community Complex. Thanks to the advocacy of Congresswoman Kathy Manning, the city was awarded a $4.3 million grant from the Outdoor Recreation Legacy Program. This supports several much-needed improvements to Noco Park, which aligns with plans for the $65 million Windsor Chavis Noco Community Complex.
Welcome back to the Greensboro City Council meeting if you would take your seats. We have seven people confirmed to speak. If Juan Carlos Merga is in the room, please see the courier, Jim Donaldson, or Brendan Bresnan. They have not checked in. We're assuming they are not here. Our first three speakers are Cece Crawford, Terrell Dungy, and Beth McKee-Hugur. If you would come to the window side of the room.
Hello, good evening. It's been a long night. My name is Terrell Dungy and I'm here to share some updates about the code compliance cases over at New Garden Place. Since our last time here, things have been slow in terms of progress on the outstanding code violations, to the point that Linda, who shared her story last time we were here about surviving the freezing cold last year, had to make the decision to leave her home of 10 years to find somewhere else so that she could stay warm and not risk her husband and grandkids getting pneumonia again. Not even a day after she leaves, Pot Lory is in that apartment gutting it, making the repairs that were on the list, and a month later, he's already got another tenant in there at a higher rate. Pot Lory, uh, excuse me. Sanivorous Pot Lory is preying on the lives and wallets of working-class people in our community. It's not only a New Garden Place, 13 other properties that he owns also has outstanding code violations. This guy has racked up over 20,000 alone at New Garden the last time we were able to check. How is it we, as a city, can criminalize people struggling on the street who can't find housing through barriers created by greedy people like Pot Lory? Yet, when it comes to holding wealthy investors accountable, suddenly, we forget how to use the police force. Suddenly, we can't increase fines on this man to make the proper repairs for these tenants. We can't address these issues by working with our buddies in the General Assembly. Are the kickbacks from these investors that great that you can leave thousands of dollars on the table from not collecting from this one man, let alone the millions from the code compliance cases that are not, or the fines and fees that are not collected on? The city needs to become more passionate about landlord enforcement as they are about criminalizing homelessness. This year, we need to stay focused on changing laws in our housing code. And before we say, "The state won't let us," that's BS. I'm calling you on it. I've spent all winter break looking over the state laws and city laws. There are tools within there if we get creative, if we get ingenuity, if we get courageous to take on the state that we could put in place to help tenants. Things like a tenant task force that can work on these solutions that are tenant-based focused and help us to better understand our tenant landlord law. Things like a temporary suspension clause where if someone is not in compliance, we have more to enforce them by temporary threatening to suspend their license, by giving them temporary time to work on it. Again, this is things I'm doing in my leisure time, I found. More than half the city residents are renters and the tenants' numbers continue to rise. If the city could invest more resources in its tenants' experience and not just development and homeownership, maybe we'd be able to keep more people from bearing the freezing temperatures this winter. I'm asking y'all, look into your wallets, leave this space, go across the county, the courtyard, go up to the General Assembly. This is important. We need to make sure we have snow coming again this weekend. We need to make sure these tenants do not have to go through another freezing weekend.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Vaughn, council members and city staff. My name is Cecily Crawford and I'm here on behalf of tenants, families, and community members calling for urgent action to address Greensboro's housing crisis. Thousands of residents in Greensboro are living in unsafe, unhealthy, and unstable housing conditions. Seniors are shivering in the cold because landlords won't fix the heat. Families are dealing with mold, pests, sewage backups, all while their rent continues to rise. This is not just a housing issue, it's a public health and economic crisis. Every eviction and neglected property costs our city. From what I heard, Greensboro spends about $10 million annually on homelessness services and Guilford County spends more or less $1 million on hotel vouchers for displaced tenants. These funds patch holes instead of addressing the root cause. Noncompliant landlords profiting from exploitation and displacement. You've heard the stories, they're not isolated. They're happening across our city, especially in low-income, black and brown communities. These conditions force tenants into impossible choices. Live in dangerous housing, face homelessness, or leave Greensboro altogether. Noncompliant landlords harm not just the tenants, but all of us. Displacement burdens emergency shelters, healthcare systems, and social services. Neglected properties drive up rents and destabilize neighborhoods. We need bold, immediate action to protect tenants and hold noncompliant landlords accountable. Today, we asked this city council to strengthen ordinances to enforce faster timelines for resolving code violations and to implement a fast-track process for urgent hearings to stop noncompliant landlords from running out the clock and forcing tenants out through neglect. This city cannot afford to be complicit in harmful behavior anymore. I know you enacted RUCO only to see the state gut it. I understand the fear of state interference, but tenants are afraid of landlords. The community feels abandoned by an ineffective system. We're all operating in fear. But you didn't get elected by being timid, you fought for those seats. So now we need you to fight for us, with us. We are asking you not just to fix broken systems, but to stand with your constituents in the fight for housing justice. Greensboro can lead, a city that shows the nation what it means to protect our homes. We heard it tonight, stronger communities mean less violence. We look forward to working with you to ensure we keep strong, stable communities by keeping Gate City housed. Thank you.
Thank you. After Beth McKee-Hugur, we have Scott Jones, followed by Malik Hugh, followed by Brandon Seegers, followed by Matthew O'Donnell. And that will be all of our speakers.
Good evening. Thank you for all your work. I'm Reverend Beth McKee-Hugur, 6017 Bush Road in Brown Summit. And tonight, I am speaking on behalf of the Interfaith Affordable Housing Initiative, a network of local faith communities working together to maximize attainable housing. As you have just heard, your constituents have encountered enormous obstacles in getting repairs despite code inspectors citing violations and imposing civil penalties. The owner simply does not comply and the city does not take legal action to enforce your own ordinance. If someone holds people hostage with a knife or a gun, police intervene immediately. If property owners endanger people by failing to provide heat or repair faulty wiring, they get long delays and no legal repercussions for noncompliance. According to your current budget document, you are spending over $2.3 million for code enforcement, staff, and operations, but your performance measures only project to bring 828 building units into compliance, not counting the junk cars and trashy lots. How much? How much inspection time is taken up on property owners who do not comply, endangering occupants and neighbors? You must do better about holding people accountable. That's just what you were talking about with police. With code compliance now under the city manager's office, you have great timing to take advantage of free code enforcement consultation from the National Center for Community Progress. The deadline to apply is January 24th. Getting apartments maintained at minimum standards is not the only impediment to fair housing. The shortage of housing shuts out everybody in the fair housing law. Right now, your consultants are writing the housing plans and the analysis of impediments of fair housing. We gotta talk to the city staff, not just the consultants, and have the staff do two-way dialogue about how to implement things. And I heard just a tiny bit more. My two requests: apply for the code enforcement consultation to put your legal muscle behind enforcing your own ordinance, and two, direct city staff to talk to the community about how we can work together. Thank you.
I believe there is one other speaker, Brendan Bresnan. You'll be in the end. Excuse me? You'll be last.
Oh, I'll be last.
Yes.
Thank you.
Scott Jones?
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening. Congratulations, Mary Kay Booziator. She just made News and Record less than five minutes ago. I'm sorry, WFMY News, less than five minutes ago. But about two hours ago, there was another article on WFMY News about a man wishing he had died today, about homelessness, being out in the cold, and the program ending in March. Let me say that the Tiny House Community Development is celebrating 10 years. That's 10 years this year, 2025, of being in existence here as a nonprofit in Greensboro, North Carolina. During that time, we've done a lot of number of things like creating workforce development. As you said, while going during our 200-year anniversary of First Presbyterian, we've recycled styrofoam, helping the city in many, many ways, creating construction education with over 164 individuals completing their construction nationally-created construction certification program through our partnership with Goodwill Industries, and getting jobs here in Greensboro doing construction and starting their own businesses here in Greensboro. But most importantly, we've had a HOPE Center, Homeless Outreach Prevention and Empowerment Center on Gate City Boulevard at 360 West Gate City Boulevard for two years. During that two-year period, let me note that we have served over 18,200 meals during Monday through Friday, 6,240 meals, all documented with signatures for everybody coming in. Every Saturday, a hot full breakfast at the HOPE Center for People Experiencing Homelessness and Poverty, including families in Greensboro. This organization has worked with city programs and diverted over 175 semi-loads of styrofoam from your waste management system. That is according to your own staff members. It has created jobs for a number of individuals experiencing homelessness and housing here in Greensboro and High Point. But do you think that this organization has been recognized for those strides? That's 175 semi-loads diverted from White Street Landfield and from the Swing Road Station. 175 according to your own staff. Thanks to our organization, Tiny House Community Development, and the HOPE Center, and the people that are experiencing homelessness, and those that are actually having to do community service. We're not recognized by this council. We've never been recognized by this council. I keep asking and we keep getting denied. We put a proposal up for white flag for the winner. We have our doors open six days a week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, City Council. Malik Huffback again. I've been playing. I've been looking at my city. I've been looking at my homeless community. And this time, I have now got a nonprofit organization called Beauty in the Streets. It's finally come to Greensboro. I went to Secretary of State and finally got my paperwork put out here. So now, North Carolina, Greensboro only will be the first place that will get the program that I'm running because I'm trying to expand it to all the other cities and the other counties. I'm trying to get it expansion. Sooner or later, it will be blown. But really, I want to talk about is, I just fed, took my own hard-earned money and fed the homeless and fed them McDonald's. And I took them out there and I fed them each a biscuit and an orange juice. And I came out, and I just came out and I said, woke up one morning, I said, "Let me just go out here and feed my homeless, see what's going on, get with my peoples, talk with them for a minute, fellowship, and just get the word out here with them and see what's going on." So I always want to say this. And City Manager Trey Davis, if you can, when we do get a chance to have that meeting, I want to have it with all the city council members and I want to bring it in here with my homeless members so that way we can all discuss what we got. Because I will march down here and bring them in here together as a whole big group. Because I really feel like my homeless members need to be able to say what they got to say, be able to tell their stories. Because it's time and time over again that the homeless members, we have lost so many people over the years, like Tiffany, like a lot of other people. And I just keep on remembrance. I walk past the pictures right outside the building, right there on the side where we be feeding at. And I just be looking at the pictures and I just look and I stop and I just look at each and every one that we have lost over from gun violence to all the way, just like the police been saying. But now, it's time for me to serve my own community and be out here doing hair for them, doing clothes, food, shoes, whatever I need to do, I'm gonna be out here and I'm going to help my homeless community out here. And I'm going to make a change. And I would like to ask for the city council, when we get a chance, to come out and just approve for my thing to be bigger for Greensboro so I can go all over Greensboro so I can make a service for my own community. I got a lot of members. I got a lot of friends, a lot of people that want to come out and help me. I just got asked to be at A&amp;T for they, to be on they, to be on their little interview with their students for their little thing. I'm also reaching out to news too. I'm reaching out to all the news stations out here, trying to get different areas. So I want my own city council to see that I am making a change for my own community. I'm out here serving and loving my own homeless communities. One day, I'll be up here and y'all, right there with y'all. I will be right there as the next city council. Thank y'all.
Hello, City Council, and Mayor, and all the rest of y'all. My name's Matthew. I, uh, I've been placed in a unique position to be at Maple Gate Christian Fellowship. We own the new, the old Girl Scout camp in Greensboro. And the Lord laid it on my heart years ago to start an urban youth ministry to teach, to not only take the urban youth and work with them to help them, you know, be discipled, but also teach them outdoor skills. I was an Eagle Scout. I've been through all sorts of wilderness survival and everything. And I think that a lot of times, we are so busy putting the urban youth into a gymnasium and places that they're comfortable, that if we can get them outdoors and with nature and with God, they can actually see, um, see the bigger picture, that it, that everything around us works together for the good of the Lord. So I don't even know why I'm here. And the Lord just pretty much led me here just to talk to y'all. I don't know if anyone wants to help me organize this because it's been in the making for quite a while now. We have the land. We have the able-bodied people. But we just need some, some people of the community that really want to dive in and put their hands and their feet to the fire and, you know, get, get the urban youth, you know. We, we heard from the chief earlier that, you know, and the council here that, that we don't really know what to do with the crime stats. I mean, the crime stats is, is what it is, but we've got to start earlier. We can't, we can't expect the cops to, to parent. We can't expect, you know, it, it's, it's a broken society. And with, with people's help and, and, you know, the love of the community and the love that I see with y'all here, I'm sure that we can make a difference. So that's all I have to say. If anybody wants to talk to me afterwards, I'll stick around.
Good evening, Mayor Vaughn and council members. Just gonna piggyback off what my brother Matthew just spoke about. He is an Eagle Scout. I'm not an Eagle Scout, but I was an urban youth. And I am a pastor at, over at Overhaul Church. And I just, when he told me about his vision that God gave him, it definitely inspired me to want to get on board and to help out in the way that I could. And like he said, we are seeking to start an urban youth camp, urban youth ministry, and it will focus on inner-city youth to basically interact with them and for them to do outdoor activities. Also, of course, we are a faith-based group that will intertwine camp and outdoor activities with biblical teachings and practices. And of course, this will definitely help zero in on persons or people, youth that are affected negatively, have negative impacts to economics. And we're also wanting to partner with surrounding schools to get the word out. So we also have another person part of our group. His name is George Steele. And he has a nonprofit organization called Peak Adventures. And they actually was featured on WFMY News 2. And he's already partnered with some of the surrounding schools in that area to, to help his, his, um, his Peak Adventures, his nonprofit organization. So we're looking to bring that also into this youth camp ministry. And yeah, like Matthew said, and like Chief Officer John Thompson said, this, the crime rate is definitely something that's, you know, getting out of hand. It's starting to, you know, starting to get a somewhat of a handle on it, but it does start early. It starts with the youth. I think that's where we need to focus on. We need to get, you know, we need to speak to the youth, get them doing something that's outside their comfort zone. Intervention definitely helps at an early age, just to get them to see something different. And also, again, like I said, we're faith-based, so we believe in the power of Christ. So, you know, we believe in, you know, interjecting that into some of the youth and, and that will help change, you know, some things going on within the city. That's all.
Thank you.
Overhaul Church just started, we just started about a year ago. Yes, we operate outside of my home, so over at 1710 Gordon Street, Overhaul Church. Yes, ma'am. My name is Brandon Seegers.
Thank you. And our final speaker.
All right, look at this. Good cold evening and Happy New Year, City Council members. My name is Brendan Bresnan. I'm a local creative. Today, I'd like to present a vision for transforming the former News and Record site into a thriving multi-use complex that revitalizes our downtown community. My apologies in advance for condensing this presentation into 2 minutes and 44 seconds. This project addresses three main needs: the lack of accessible outdoor sports facilities downtown, the need for vibrant, attainable housing, and the opportunity to beautify the city by replacing a neglected site with a space that inspires community pride. These align closely with the city council's mission to shape an inclusive future, the vision to make Greensboro the most desirable mid-sized city in the U.S., and the goal of becoming a youth sports capital. Now imagine with me a destination in the heart of Greensboro where people of all ages gather, play, eat, and connect. This 480,000-square-foot site will have that and more, featuring a mid-rise apartment building with probably up to 100 units, a vibrant food hall, and state-of-the-art athletic facilities that elevate the city's recreational offerings. Now, the north side, as you see here, will feature residential units with parking access off Market Street, offering attainable housing in an area that needs it. The connected food hall to the south, supported by retail storefronts, will bring economic vitality east of Elm Street, creating a dynamic, walkable space that mirrors the success of similar developments we've seen in High Point, Durham, Charlotte, et cetera. And now, the southern portion opens up to feature green spaces with walking paths, shaded seating, and public art celebrating Greensboro's rich history, including a commemorative statue at the February 1 entrance. These features ensure the site remains both inviting and inspiring. Now, at the heart of the project is a versatile athletic facility designed to meet the needs of all ages and interests. Highlights including, you can see them on the screen here, a large turf field for multiple soccer, football, lacrosse, and youth sports, six pickleball courts that could transform into a winter hockey rink, four basketball courts, two beach volleyball courts, and a large skate park that would probably be the largest in the state. This facility will serve youth leagues, families, teens, young professionals, and active seniors, fostering community connection and solidifying Greensboro's reputation as a hub for recreation and entertainment. Now, safety and accessibility will be priorities with well-witted walkways, solar panel-shaded seating areas, advanced security measures, and an onsite administration building equipped with medical resources, sports equipment, and scheduling purposes. Now, this project is definitely about transforming that blighted space into a vibrant, multi-use destination. It embodies Greensboro's goals. By combining housing, recreation, and community-focused amenities, we create a space that serves as a source of pride for residents and a draw for visitors alike. And I would encourage the city council to move forward with this vision by starting with a community poll and following up with a feasibility study and gathering community support with partners to gauge interest. This project has the potential to leave a lasting legacy for Greensboro. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sir, excuse me.
Mr. Bresnan?
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, have a good one.
I'm Zach.
Hi, Zach. I'm Brendan.
And I work at this company called Downtown Greensboro.
Yes, sir.
I'd love to, for you to give your information to Gary. And we actually are in the process of this.
Okay, fantastic. That's good to hear.
Ironically, your images are similar to some that I've seen.
Somebody's picking my brain, I guess.
Or maybe somebody's picking mine.
Good to hear.
But I think, you know, I think it'd be great for you to come by the office and see what we've done, how we've thought about some things. But we are going to get through a six-month, five, six-month process of engaging the community and updating the downtown strategic plan. I'd love for you to be a part of that.
Fantastic. I would love to. Further questions?
He's over there in the corner.
Well acquainted. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of our speakers from the floor. No public hearings. We do have one general business item. It is I-1.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, we need to do the consent agenda as well, please.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. Do I have a motion? Hugh? Seconded by Dr. Wells. Council, please vote.
Madam Mayor, who moved that?
Hugh Goldie. That passes eight to zero.
Ms. Hugo, I did want you to know and Cece that we have a lot of violations, especially from New Garden and the code enforcement people. Have been working on it. Some asking Mr. Wilson if he will look into it further. We're in, it's a, it's a touchy situation because the, all of the violations. But then, if the people have to move, they have no place to go either. So we're just in a very precarious situation, but we are working on it. We do realize that there are a lot of code enforcement violations. We do realize that there are a lot of code enforcement violations. And it's really going up in, in what the landlords should be paying, but we're gonna look into it. Mr. Wilson, would you do that, please?
No, ma'am, we can't.
Yeah.
Goldie, did you finish? Because I was, I, I, too, we, we, we know all the violations over there. We are very aware of that property. We understand all the concerns. We are limited by the state. I know you don't want to hear that, but we are. But where we can push the needle, we absolutely agree, we have to. Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Dungy brought up something, I wasn't quite clear on what he was talking about. But can you find out a little bit more about whatever it was he was talking about, something in the general statute at the state? Because we have attempted a form of RUCO before, we put it on our legislative agenda and just didn't get anywhere. We got a little concerned about it, but we don't disagree that landlords need to be held accountable, those that are the bad actors as well. But Mr. Wilson, as Goldie had asked you, but I believe you are looking deeper into some of those things already. Is that something?
Yes, ma'am, I'll, I'll be happy to do that and get that information to council. I did ask for the case files today, and staff is providing that to me, so I'll review it and see where we may have some additional opportunities. I'll also get you an update on the status of those violations.
Okay, yeah, and it is a concern if we need to go back and start doing more code if they don't have heat, because it is, that is a problem.
We.
Let me, let me also add, not gonna respond to that, but let me also add in addition to the comments just made by council member Hightower. I know that Ms. McKee-Huger mentioned the Center for Community Progress that has some, some funding available for code repairs with the deadline of January twenty-fourth to get it in. I, I think it's something that if we can have her to leave that information and we can follow up and see the viability of it, and if so, is, that's additional funding to help us with, with capacity building and the like in code compliance and helping get these repairs, these much-needed repairs, then that would be good also. So, Ms. McKee-Huger, if you could leave that information with Gary in the back, and then also some contact information so that if necessary, we can leverage your expertise and knowledge on it.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, and folks, I just want to say that I also got your email and sent it to the city staff separately. So I just don't want you to leave here not thinking that you don't have our attention, because you had multiple people, majority of council, just say, "We heard you and we're pushing." But I will say, there's a lot of disappointment coming out of kind of housing. And I, I think we need some updates on what we're doing. I might ask some about something else later when I get my turn, but.
Just to be clear, code is working with me now and no longer part of housing, so happy to get any information needed.
Let's just, let's just help the people.
I will say, Zach, no, Chris, Chris did send us an update, a director update, that showed a lot of housing being built. Maybe we can expound upon what you sent. You know, you listed the names, maybe you can list the numbers of some of those, those being built. We got it, but we didn't get the total numbers being built, so people will know where there's some alternatives coming up at.
Thank you. We have no public hearing items, we do have one general business item. It's I point one, an ordinance amending state, federal, and other grant fund budget in the amount of eleven million dollars for appropriation of funds from Senate House Bill two fifty-nine administered by the N.C. Office of State Budget and Management. It has come to my attention that the attachment actually has all eleven million dollars going to Bingham Park. And it's only ten million dollars, well, only, ten million is going to Bingham Park. One million is going to downtown Greensboro for remediation projects. So that needs to be corrected in the attachments.
Yes, 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 ma'am. So the, the title, the, this item is for the appropriation of the eleven million, but as you note back in the October special meeting, it is the, the, the funds are ten million to Bingham Park and one million allocated to, to downtown, but we'll get that corrected.
Yeah, that's not the way it reads in the attachment. And if this passes, I want to make sure that we know it's ten and one. You know, initially, it was gonna be maybe six and four, but.
It is here, Mayor, it is here. It says purpose.
What I'm looking at on the screen says Bingham Park, it doesn't say downtown.
But, but are you looking at the agenda report?
I'm looking at the purpose.
Purpose, this, this ordinance allocates the eleven million, but it comes down here and says the balance of one would be appropriated for downtown. It says here, through city council fact, we directed the split of the eleven million award through a document and a resolution which earmarked ten million of this funding for Bingham. The balance of one million would be appropriated for downtown.
There is, there is another place where it says eleven million for Bingham Park. And that was, I just don't want there to be any confusion. Well, yeah, ordinance amending federal, federal and other grant fund budget in the amount of eleven million dollars for the appropriation of funds from the, for Bingham Park. It is, wait a minute, I just saw it.
Because I, I did talk to Mr. Fleishman, and they, they corrected that. And so I think it got uploaded wrong, but the correct document should have got uploaded. Mr. Fleishman, are you here? Do you want to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
There you are. He is speaking. Because he was standing over there one time. So can you?
I think this actually updated as I was reading it.
Because we talked about this today, as a matter of fact.
We did, uh, good evening, Mayor and council. Originally, when this agenda item was developed, it was not clear. And we adjusted the wording in that so that what was posted does reflect what it should reflect, which was council's intent from the meeting in October, which is ten million dollars for Bingham Park remediation and one million for downtown sites.
Yeah, I think what happened is it refreshed. I was looking at an old, and when I hit the button, it refreshed. I know I wasn't losing my mind.
What it is, is there's two documents, one twenty-five.
Yeah, but hit, hit, and it'll, it'll come up different in a second.
Guys, you're a hundred percent correct, it did say that, and we added it, so when it gets refreshed, it changes. Everybody's right.
So move the item.
Yes, so we're good. A move by Mrs. Hightower, seconded by Dr. Wells.
And I do have one question.
Go ahead.
Relative to these funds, these, these ten million dollars for Bingham Park being appropriated for remediation, is that remediation designated specifically for cap and cover, or is it just for remediation in general?
The agenda item tonight is to accept the funds and establish a budget ordinance, strictly.
Period?
Period.
Okay. Thank you.
But I do want to be clear about one thing, and I'm right. However, the cap and cover money is covered by N.C.D.E.Q., not this money.
Let me try to help and feel you.
Please don't crack your knuckles with the microphone on.
Oh, my goodness.
God, it's loud.
The, the process was voted on during a previous meeting, and so you all voted on a method during a previous council meeting.
Right.
This is specifically to accept the funds that have been awarded to you and establish a budget ordinance, that's it.
And so Zach can go spend his million tomorrow. I know.
Well, that, that's great. Yes, it has been moved and seconded. Angie, I turned my screen off by mistake, I'm a yes.
Councilmember Matheny?
I don't know what I just did.
And I do want to thank Mr. Matheny for graciously sharing the lion's share of this money and helping direct it toward what we believe will be a viable resolution that we're coming to. Certainly, we always looking at, you know, other options, but we know we have a great path forward here. And this establishes the way to utilize those dollars. And so I want to thank you for doing that, supporting that.
Ms. Hightower, you worked hard on this for many years, and hopefully, you're right, it will come to a, a good resolution.
Okay, and so that passes eight to zero. And that is the end of our printed agenda. We do have boards and commissions. I, I want to say that at our last meeting, we should have appointed somebody to the civil service board, and we didn't. And I don't think we're prepared to do it tonight. I think Angie, I think Angie sent us an email with the four people. We really need to do that at our next meeting, so if council, myself included, can review those four people, if there is somebody that you would like to recommend who's not on that list, it really needs to be done in the next day or two, because people in culture will need to verify a few things, because by statute, it's specific on what people have to, where they live and where they've worked. So if we could be prepared at our next meeting to make that appointment.
All right. I'm prepared tonight, but I think my colleagues may need to have some additional info.
Boards and commissions, Mrs. Hoffman, Mrs. Thur, Dr. Wells, Mrs. Abuziwaider? Zach, Hugh, Sharon?
No, I don't have any, but I, I would like to have a quick conversation about our boards and commissions. There is a board, the redevelopment commission, and there was some conversation had a little bit today. I would like for us to consider, Ms. Hoffman is the liaison, maybe the time change. I think we want people to serve on our boards and our commissions, but we don't want to set times where they can't make it and then we start to ding them for their absence and say, oh, they didn't show up, they had to wait, they're late. And I think that particular commission starts at five. I would like for them to reconsider and look at maybe five thirty. I think there's been a member or two who has struggled to make the five o'clock, very valuable person to serve. We want all our citizens to serve, but we also need to meet people where they are. And I would always just have a time where people can't make it, or only certain people can come. So I'd like for us to really look at that particular board.
I think that would be fine, Ms. Hightower. And I, I don't like people attending meetings while they're driving their car.
Yeah, I mean.
So.
And, and that's happened a couple times, too. Yes, ma'am, so what do we need?
It frightens me.
Right, so I guess we would need to have that discussion with the board, but I, I, I mean, I think that thirty minutes, I, I, I don't see, you know, I think that would give each member an opportunity to say, hey, I'm here. Because we have waited for not just one particular member, but for some, and you're right, some have been driving, and we don't want that. So what do we have to do? I don't know, Ms. Hoffman can probably decide she want to do it.
I mean, I think we can talk about it, five thirty is fine with me, I mean, I shouldn't think it would be a staff issue if we wanted to move a half an hour later. Let's see if that helps our attendance issue.
I think, I think we can, I think it can. I think, I've had conversation with a couple of them, and they seemed amenable to it. I think they were very concerned that maybe some weren't getting there in a timely fashion. But that five o'clock time isn't getting off work, because it's kind of rough sometimes, so.
It's tight for people who are working.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. City Manager, or whoever? Mr. Attorney, Zach? Oh, it's a mo-, okay, I can do it, I can make a mo-, Ms. Hoffman, is all right if I make the motion? Because I, I mean, you're the liaison. Huh? Okay, I'd like to move that we, um, I'm on. Oh, Ms. Hoffman's on, oh, I'm on. I'd like to move that we change the time, the start time of the redevelopment commission from five P.M. to five thirty P.M.
And I will second that motion.
Thank you. You want me to? I, yeah, sure, no problem. I do easy motions so I can remember. I'd like to move the start time of the redevelopment commission from five P.M. to five thirty P.M. For their regular meeting time.
Do you have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Hoffman, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes eight to zero.
Thank you very much.
Um, I was just informed by the city attorney that we really need to vote on that civil service board position today. And Mrs. Hightower, I think you said you had somebody that you would like to propose.
Yes, I would like to appoint Mr. George Ingram to the civil service board. He has a lot of experience, he was one.
All in favor? Yes, he is.
He's on the, he's also on the list. Uh, he's one of the ones that was referred by the police. The police referred three, two or one. One, George, Mr. George Ingram, I believe you talked, sent you the information. And one person self-nominated, but Mr. Ingram appears, he has a plethora of experience and I think would bring a very objective viewpoint to the civil service board.
Um, is there a second? Okay, there is a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes eight to zero.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Sharon, you're on a roll, you got anything else?
Hey, I'm, what can I say?
We better slow down, just in case.
Yes. Brief council comments, Sharon?
Hi, would like to, first of all, extend my condolences to Irish Spencer and family. Irish, who is known as the Wild Irish Rose on ninety point one W.N.A.A., and also known to us as the founder of FASC, Families Against Senseless Killings, because her son was killed a few years ago, lost her husband, Big Daddy William Spencer, and he was funeralized on this past Saturday. He was an awesome individual veteran, retired military veteran, and to know him was to love him. During COVID, he and his organization fed the kids over in the Warner'sville area because of school not being in and them not being able to get meals. And they fed every day with money out of their pocket. And so it goes to show you what volunteerism really looks like. And he also started the Veterans Day Parade that we now have done for, I think, the eighth year. He and Irish started that, started out small and has grown. So he certainly loved the military, and he will certainly be missed. And I wanted to offer my condolences to her as well. I do want to offer condolences to the family of the officer, officer who ran, who ran, who lost his life tragically and senselessly as well. And I also want to say that violence is concerning, it's very concerning. We have to really begin to focus on the root of violence.
to really begin to focus on the root of violence. There is something that causes people to behave in a manner they think that violence solves the problem, but it doesn't. It creates more problems than it solves. And I heard you, Zach, when you said, you know, police can't do it, it's not police, it's putting it on the judges. But sometimes the judges' hands are tied by certain things, because let's don't leave out the fact that you've got lawyers that get paid as well. So it's not just one part of a system, it's all the system that we need to look at. And so I want us to be mindful of that, because we have some great judges. And sometimes they do run unopposed, as opposed to somebody running we don't want. And so I don't want us just to kind of focus on one as opposed to another. It is a collective effort that we need to be working within the content of. So, and I just want to say that. I certainly support our law enforcement. We have some of my good buddies that I love dearly, and it is their occupation. I support that. I just want our community to be safe, and I want us all to respect our community, so that we feel like we're all being a part of a city, and not just scrutinized on one side of town versus the other. Anyway, so I just say that. But thank you for everything.
Thank you. Dr. Wells?
I want to congratulate two judges that I went to swearing in on January 2nd, Tamika Gauz and Charlene Armstrong, my ladies in our community who have risen to that position. And the families, the families of those victims, those young men that have died, when something happens like that affects the whole family, you know, the family of the person that was killed, and then the persons of the family of the person who did the violent act. And we listened to the chief, and police can't do it all. It's about a lot of unrest, and a lot of this domestic violence, and people are living together that don't want to be together, and then they end up shooting each other. I just wish people find somebody else. If that's not the right one, just find somebody else instead of staying there in all of that confusion. I'm happy to say that we will have our District Two conversation, our community leaders with our city manager on Thursday night. And District Two has so many community groups, and I wanted the leaders to come. So we have about 15 folk that are coming to talk to the city manager. It's a large district. You go from Reedy Park all the way down to A&amp;T, there are a lot of neighborhood groups. So I wanted him to meet the leaders, and they want to meet him. So I'm excited about that. So we're going to do that on Thursday night. I haven't had a town hall in quite a while, but I'm looking forward to doing that again.
Yeah, those are good.
Soon. Thank you.
Mr. Matheny?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, being that it's cold, and I've seen the emails about White Flag, how are our White Flags doing? Are they full? Is there room for more people that we could help? Do we need to engage other organizations? What are we, how are we doing?
Sure. As of today, we had done White Flag 19 nights, and it served about 200 different people. So some people come multiple nights, but we've seen about 200 different individuals using White Flag. Greensboro Urban Ministry, they are always full and even over capacity, but they've been able to keep up with the demand. That's not been an issue. Our family center at Glenwood Rec has never been full. They, not as many families are using that, but we have seen an increase in families going there. I think as more, as more folks go and see that it's really just a place to get warm, it's not, it's not a place where DSS is coming, you know, to see what's going on with your family. It's nothing like that. It's truly a warming center with the Office of Community Safety. They are staffing it. So again, we have seen an increase there. But yeah, I believe at this point, we could probably use a second location for adults. We did have a church approach us, and they were willing to do it. They were a little more out in the county, and they really wanted to be a winter shelter, not necessarily a White Flag. So we just couldn't come to an agreement with them for this winter, but we're looking at using them next winter. The winter shelters are all full. All four churches are full. They filled up immediately.
So of the winter shelters, that's multiple funded organizations. That's not just city-funded, correct?
That's city-funded.
It is all city-funded, yes.
So, okay, so I think we should continue to research and look at for other partners. I mean, you know, I know Tiny Homes and Hope Center have come up a lot. I don't know if they're the answer or not, but let's, you know, people that are willing to help those that are in need, let's just, whether it's churches, whoever it is, because it's cold. He's right, it's cold.
It is.
And it's going to get colder. And so let's, I'm going to, I'm just requesting y'all to continue to push to try to help as many people as we can.
One of the things that police ambassadors, folks downtown are doing, particularly in the downtown area, but also in other districts, if they see someone outside, they will approach them and let them know where a White Flag shelter is. I've had folks reach out to me and say, hey, there's a person on Elm Street or on battleground, and they're outside in the middle of the night. Can someone go address them? And we've had an officer go by. Sometimes they do want to go to a warming center, sometimes they do not.
Right. Well, I'm just saying, like, if there's, let's, let's continue to try to seek partners that have space that we can put people in a warm spot.
Absolutely.
On the flip side, surely there's been conversations about April 1st, right?
When the winter shelters go away?
Right.
Yes, we are planning for that, and talking about what that looks like.
I would love to be a part or some type of update, I think, council, you know, because I'm going to make some, I'm going to have some conversations about it, because, you know, I'm going to have some conversations about it, because, you know, we made some decisions, but we got to give a place for people to go. And so, and it's not just parks and sidewalks, or tents necessarily, or maybe it is tents, you know. Have we ever reached out to the commissioner of insurance? I know I recommended that for the pallet homes. Are the pallet homes full?
Yes. Well, the last time I checked, they actually did have about five spaces, I believe, but they had people on a waiting list waiting to get processed.
Sometimes they rotate out because they get other permanent housing or something.
That's correct. I would have to double check. I did not get that figure today, but they have been steadily, you know, if there is a bed open, there's somebody waiting to be processed, get into it.
But like, have we ever reached out to the commissioner of insurance and said, can we have more time in a pallet home versus the six months, the window?
I think that's definitely something we need to look at, but.
Sometimes it's better to ask forgiveness than permission.
That's fair, but, you know, Mr. Colesy does have Grailford County roots, did have two businesses in downtown.
That's right.
On Green Street, so he's very familiar with us. I don't think he has a negative connotation as some state folks do. So I think it would be worth, I think he'd be willing to work with us. And I think, when I said that three years ago, or two years ago, I'm just surprised that that still hasn't been done.
Why don't we invite him down?
Invite him down? He's here. He came here for the holiday. So I just encourage us, because I think that if the pallet homes are working, and it seems that they are, then let's do everything we can to use them. And then, again, what about those, I mean, I've seen the houses, I sent y'all a link on those other smaller homes, I'll say, mini homes, that I've seen on TV, that are anywhere between, you know, 10 to $20,000, depending upon the size and the outfit. They look a lot better than the pallet homes.
The issue with those is that they don't come with plumbing or electricity, and so it's really just the shell. You've got to go in and add all that stuff after the fact?
We have land in this city. We should have bought.
No, I mean, in the house.
Right, we can get, we can get, think about it, I think we can be strategic and have partners that would outfit the plumbing and the electric. And if we put it on land, too, such as a former salvation arming land, that had plenty of infrastructure.
Oh, what, 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 huh? What, what, what? Wait a minute.
Remember, I gave you 10 million.
Yeah, but you, 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 you can, you can have it back, but I think we got to be careful on how we put those types of things all in one area.
I retract my last statement on where.
Let's, let's, let's look more, let's look more housing-type stuff.
Let's go, I'll stick with housing.
Yeah, let's do more housing. I'm all for that.
I will, so I would love an update on the plan for April 1st. And that's somewhat of an arbitrary date, but not necessarily. So that's, that's what's on my mind.
And Zach mentioned the White Flag, and we're still using Glenwood Recreation Center. What's going on with the church?
The, as of today, they were clearing the church, and we were hoping to use it tomorrow. We have had problem after problem with heat and space and that sort of thing, but they've finally got all those kinks worked out, and we should be at the church tomorrow.
So we could do both?
If we could staff it, we could do both. Staffing has been one of the limitations that we've had. The Office of Community Safety has been great at recruiting, you know, people to staff that location. I will certainly look into whether we could do both and see if we could get more adults.
For an immediate need, if we have, if we've got a place, let's see if we can staff it.
Yeah, one of our partner organizations may be willing to assist us with staffing as well. I know we have had some people offer staff, even if it wasn't a location. Obviously, we have to find the funding for that, but it's going to be really cold for the next week. So we'll look at that tomorrow.
So my follow-up question on that, is the Glenwood Church that you said we've had multiple problems with?
The heat wasn't working, and to try to get it to work, then something else with the heat would fail.
So my question is, I would like to know, every penny we have spent and invested in that property, that we got at such a great rate?
Sure.
Including design work? Everything. Thank you.
Yes.
So the heat is still not working. So the heat is still apart.
She said it'll work tomorrow.
Yes.
That the church is ready to open tomorrow.
With working heat. One of the, and so one of the limitations there is because it was going to have children, you couldn't have space heaters, you couldn't have some of the other heating sources that you might consider if it was a place full of adults. And so we had to get the boiler working in order to get the church operational, and that, it was old, and it took some work, but we've gotten it there.
But it's old, and it needed a part that took forever.
Forever.
But what happens is it's still old. It's still old. So we're going to need a new heater? I mean.
Sharon, sometimes you can replace a part or two, and you're fine, even if you're still old.
Well, let's make sure we get a titanium part.
Absolutely. As long as we waited for it, it better not be from T-MOO.
So Nancy?
We had our local government commission meeting in Raleigh today with our new treasurer, Brad Briner. Brad called me on Friday last week, and we had a really nice, very nice conversation. I'm looking forward to working with him this year. We had two items on our agenda today. Our general obligation refunding request was approved, as well as the Piedmont Triad Water Authority funding matter was passed today. It occurred to me, one of the things that we look at at our local government commission meetings every month is we look at the unfunded liabilities of county and cities who have, who have a request, funding request at the commission level. And right now, at the City of Greensboro, we've got about $144 million in unfunded liabilities. That's primarily for future healthcare costs for our employees as they retire, and it's also the separation program for our law enforcement officers. But because we pay a lot of attention to that at the local government commission level, I thought it would be worth maybe just a quick discussion when we have our retreat with council. It's something that I don't think we've, we ever really talk about, but I think it's worth our, at least, understanding that and how we, how we plan for it. So just a suggestion, not a lot of time, just an FYI kind of thing.
I think that's a great idea. The board that I serve on also deals with the retirees and cost of living increases, and I know that they have not had one in a very long time. And I think it would be good for us to explain why. And part of that is, you know, we have more people, we have more retired employees throughout the state of North Carolina than we ever have, and we have fewer people paying into the system. So every year, it's running as a deficit. And if the, if the retirees get a cost of living adjustment or whatever, it comes back to the cities. Last year, the legislature, they did help with retired teachers, but that's all they did, was retired teachers. Anything else, we would have to find a way to fund it in our budget, and that would be a very significant number. And Larry has mentioned that on occasion, because it does come up. But it would be good, I think, to have a greater understanding how that works. Tammy?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Councilwoman Wells mentioned that her upcoming, she's having her upcoming meeting with her community and the city manager this week. I think you said this week? Yeah. I would very much like, once you're completed with all these meetings, if council could get some sort of summary report of what have you learned through doing these? You know, I know what the discussion was at my district, but I'd be very much interested in hearing kind of a consensus of what came out of these meetings, and what, what have you seen from those, these meetings? In addition, I mentioned to Trey last week, I think, when we spoke, you know, we had almost as many car deaths and accident deaths last year as we had homicides. And that's something that I think we need to take a very serious look at. I've requested information on, are, what are the trends there? You know, is there something about, you know, X percent of these people were crossing in the middle of the street, X percent involved drivers speeding, X percent involved, you know, deer. Whatever it is, I know that personally, I kept track for a week. And I can't tell you how many times, even going the speed limit, that I could have seen somebody hit by a car because they're dressed all in black and crossing the street in the middle of the block, and those kinds of things. And I think it's really critical that we understand what's going on with that. Yes, part of it's speeding. Yes, part of it's people crossing in the middle of the street, but we need to understand what was driving those numbers this year, that last year. You know, we've had vision zero for quite some time, and since we've had vision zero, I think those numbers have continued to go up rather than going down. And so that's something that I really think we need to take a look at. Who knows whether we can impact those numbers, but we're doing a disservice to people in the community if we don't at least look at it and try. So I think that's something we really need to get a hold of as well. And I'll save my other comment for our next meeting.
Mary Kay?
I will try to be brief. I just want to thank everybody for the vote, and I do understand, you know, a lot of the comments that were made. I'm definitely good with those. I understand 100%. I did want to say that I was able to attend the funeral for William McKinley Spencer Jr. in High Point. It was, as Sharon so eloquently stated, Irish Spencer's husband. And the mayor was not able to attend, so I read the. And the mayor was not able to attend, so I read the proclamation for the service. And I want to tell you that I really don't think there was a dry eye in the House during several parts of that funeral. He was so well-loved, and as Sharon stated, he started the Veterans Day Parade. And, you know, I remember Zach, you're the one that brought forward about, you know, employees having Veterans Day off so that they could attend those things. So, you know, condolences to the family. It's a lovely family, and I know that they are hurting right now. Very much so, you know, the family of Officer Haran is hurting right now, and I know that everyone is, is feeling and praying and sending condolences to them. You know, it unfortunately brought up what we went through a year ago with Sergeant Nix. I worked with Sergeant Nix at the Family Justice Center, and, you know, all of those feelings. I cannot imagine what our police department people, and the sworn and the non-s sworn, and everybody who worked with both of these officers, I can't imagine what everybody is feeling right now. So, my thoughts and prayers and condolences go out to all of them because they, they feel like they've had another gut punch. I do want to say that I want to thank Mr. Trey Davis. He spoke to my Kiwanis last week, and they were very appreciative. So, yes, he is available to speak at groups. I'm putting that out there. But I, I do want to say that, you know, they were very attentive. Sometimes you get people that have to leave at a certain time, or this, that, or the other, but they pretty much stayed and listened to him the whole time. So, very well done, and I want to personally thank you. I had my little group with Mr. Davis for lunch one day, and I just want to say that I agree with you, Tammy. I want to, I bet we're going to find a lot of the things that we think are so different about our districts and everything. I think we're going to find a lot of things that are similar. I really, really do. And I have not spoken to them. I see him shaking. He said, "Yes, possibly." But I have not spoken to him about this, but I just got that feeling from, because at large, I had somebody from every district. So, you know, and everybody was telling about their district. So, that was really good, and I really appreciate you doing that. So, I know that we have a lot to do, and thank you, Madam Mayor, for talking today about, you know, the mayor pro tem. And I just want to let you know that I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Holston?
Thank you, Mayor Vaughn. I, I also extend additional condolences to the family of Officer Haran. We talked about it earlier, but the violence that we're seeing in our community over the past couple of weeks is, is unnerving. It's concerning, and we're going to have to take some, take some steps about it. I want to commend the Office of Community Safety for sponsoring the Stop the Violence Gathering on New Year's Day over on Longdale. I know that Councilmember Wells was also there. The unfortunate part about that is that while we were there at that gathering, that vigil, another homicide occurred at the very same time. So, we're going to have to get our arms around it, and it's going to take all of us. I'll say that it was back in December, we had the resolution for National Homeless Persons Memorial Day and Walk, and that was on December eighteen, where Mayor Vaughn and Zach were also in attendance, where we walked from Urban Ministries down to Grace Church. It was a great turnout. It's for a great cause, and we must, definitely must keep our eye on the prize when it comes to our homeless population. All of our citizens, but also our most vulnerable, and those tend to be those who are homeless or unhoused. It was said earlier that the weather is about to get bad. It's going to be cold for a sustained period of time. Temperature is in the, in the twenties. We've talked about white flag, talked about the Urban Ministries doing some work and maybe bringing some, some other entities on board. I'm, I'm going to ask our city staff, city manager, to let's be creative, as creative as we possibly can be, not letting great be the enemy of good, so that if folks can have some alternatives or some plans to stay safe, because these colds, these temperatures are going to be deadly. And so, we want to make sure that, it, it might not be the, the perfect place or location, or may not be able to get there. Heck, we can use trolley buses to get them there. Let's just be creative. Our vulnerable populations are in danger over the next ten to fourteen days. We are, we have ice and snow coming in this weekend, I believe. Going to make it treacherous for everyone, but especially if you're living outside. So, I just encourage that we be very, very creative in addressing and providing, at very least, some temporary solutions, if not midterm or long-term. And then also, I want to say to you, City Manager Trey, that, that the group that we had for lunch, it was a, it was a group from all around the city, very passionate. And I appreciate you being there, listening, and helping to provide some, some conversations, some, some counsel, and also to look into some things. And so, I just look forward to what's going to come out of those meetings also collectively. We're each individual members, but collectively, we're strong, and so I appreciate your commitment to, to meeting and discussing. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I too want to give my condolences to the Haran family and to GPD. We had those two horrific situations in one year, and that impacts every single member of our police department and their families because they have to be thinking, "That could have been me. Would that be me?" Their parents, their families are probably scared to death as their, as the officer works out, walks out the door to do their jobs. I think we need to keep in mind that it impacts the whole police department and all of the first responders. Nine-one-one who takes the phone call. The shift that took the phone call for Officer Haran was the same shift that took the phone call for Sergeant Nix. The fire department responds all the time. The friends that these groups have throughout the City of Greensboro, the employees of the City of Greensboro, really is enormous, and this has impacted a large number of our employees. And we have to think about that secondhand trauma and what it does to them going to work and what it does to their families. I appreciate that every day, they literally put their lives on the line. Certainly, when Officer Haran got up that morning, he had no idea how it was going to end. When he got that call, he did not know that that would be his end-of-watch call. It seemed like a typical call. And I think we have to really appreciate that every single officer has got a second guess every single time they take a call. So, my condolences goes out to the Haran family and to our police department. I know that we all feel the same way and that we all share the same concerns, but they need to know that we've got their back and that we've got their minds, that if there are issues that they're having dealing with these traumas on a daily basis, that there are people they can reach out to through the police department and through people in culture to get the help that they need, and I hope that they'll reach out and do that. Regarding the people living without shelter, the next ten days, it is expected to go below zero every single day. You know, I know that we have many conversations with the, with the county, but we're talking about ways to get people to the table. Maybe they could help us, Andrea, with some staffing. I mean, if we've got two locations, let's use them both. I understand how hard it is to staff things, especially last minute, but I would encourage us to reach out to the county manager tomorrow and see what it is that they can do to help us. You know, they are directing this homeless task force. They've made a, you know, a lot of statements about wanting to be part of the solution. I think we need them to be part of the solution tomorrow. And, you know, once we get through the winter, as has been said, that doesn't mean the problem goes away. And we have some of these locations that we've identified. We have to see how we can use them long-term. And I think it's a great idea about having the insurance commissioner come down and look at these pallet houses to see if we can use them through the summer. I know we tried to buy some additional pallet houses, and we couldn't because they were sold out. And I imagine that there's probably a long waiting list, but we need to look at those and other alternatives now for next year. That's all I have. Mr. City Manager?
None tonight. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney?
I actually have a-
May I have a question?
I have two things briefly. The first is, a couple of meetings ago, you guys gave us authority to pursue action against that towing company that had-
Oh, yeah.
That towing company that had made another authorized towing of a city property during the anti-homecoming. Well, it turns out, we didn't need to file a lawsuit. We communicated with the owner, and he's agreed that the right thing to do would be to pay the people back. We're just trying to figure out who all the people are and to make sure that we get everybody's money back.
So, the last time you and I spoke, I think you had said that they had only, at that point, compensated one person.
That's correct.
And so, what can we do to help get the message out? And maybe we can't depend on them to go through their, their paperwork and call people and say, "We owe you money." I mean, can we take out an ad that says, "If you were towed from this location," and you can prove it, that you can be, that you can get a refund? I, I don't think we can-
I'm sure we probably, I'm sure we probably can. The easiest thing I could do would be to mention this to you in public and hope that the word gets out.
So, I, I think we need to name the towing company and publicly and help get the word out that people are, that people can get a refund if they can prove that they were towed from that location.
The news and record reporter is still here, so I'm sure-
Kevin, she's talking to you.
Yes. Okay. Kevin, help me with that.
You're on the same page I was on in this example.
Yeah, because, because Mayor Vaughn, some of those folks may have been out of town, from out of town.
Well, I know there was some emails that came in through our Greensboro City address.
We're doing all we can to chase them down.
That listed them, okay, as well. I did have a quick question.
Wait, he had one more item.
Oh, you got one more item?
If I could just finish.
Oh, let you talk while you can, because normally you don't.
Sorry. I really just wanted to say, because I know the conversation regarding the mayor pro tem position was a difficult conversation. I had been asked whether or not that could be done in closed session. The statute specifically eliminates that as an opportunity. And it's a difficult conversation, but I just wanted to compliment you all on the tone and tenor of the conversation and, you know, the way you all worked through it. It's impressive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon?
I just had a quick question. We were talking about homeless and how cold it's going to be. So, when we see someone on the street that is homeless, and we ask them, "Can we take you somewhere or get you shelter," and they refuse, what can we do? Because at that point-
I call Andrea and tell her the location of where I've seen the person, and GPD goes out to ask if they could bring them to a shelter.
That's correct. And then they also, they have a document that provides information on winter sheltering, Greensboro Urban Ministry, all those sorts of resources that we have in place. Ultimately, and this is, this has happened, if they say, "No, I don't want to go anywhere," legally, we don't have any, and not, I'm not giving legal advice, but there's no, there's no reasonable suspicion, there's no probable cause, there's nothing a police officer can do to take them into custody and make them go to a warming center.
I, I did remember, I think, that police would carry blankets in their car, though, and they still doing that, I guess.
You know, I don't think we did that this year. That is something we've done in the past. We would get large donations of blankets. I don't believe that we were offered those this year.
So, then if we approach someone who's somewhere, and they say, "No, I'm not going," I mean, "But you need another blanket, sir," or something, how do we make sure they get that or something? Do we have a way to call one of the homeless providers and say, "Hey, someone on the corner of M., go by and check on them," or something?
Certainly, that's how we provide them with that document, with all the resources that we do have, that we would like them to take advantage of. But again, ultimately, there's not anything we can make them do.
Right, and I get the fact you hand them a document, but sometimes just handing person a piece of paper, they're going to read it, you know, and for whatever reason, maybe they don't read. I think we have to think about some of those things as well. So, and they may just toss it to the side. So, what do we do? And that's what I was asking.
Well, we're, we're offering to take them to shelter.
We are, but if they refuse, then, I mean, then I'm saying, do we call someone and say, "Hey, there is an individual on the corner of whatever and whatever who refuses to go. Maybe you ride by and check on them."
Sharon, the toughest thing, I think, right now is, I was told from the county, we essentially have zero street outreach. So, I don't know the resources from, say, Greensboro Urban Ministry or some others. They don't, they can't go out. Now, to Andrea's point, the downtown ambassadors are street outreach, which I told the county, if they helped us with some funding, we would release them to go throughout, we would go to High Point. Like, they don't have to be just downtown because we want to help as many people, but we don't have the outreach. So, B heart can go, maybe an officer, maybe if it's downtown or close to the vicinity, an ambassador. We hand out tents, we hand out blankets, we hand out clothing, gloves. The group hands out as much as we can.
We don't, we don't give up on them. We don't, you know, the officer's not just going to move on and say, "Oh, well, oh, well." We would continue, continue to have somebody go and check on the person, try to make sure that, I mean, if it's seventeen degrees outside and someone sees someone on the sidewalk, we're not just going to say, "You can stay there." I mean, you know, that's, it's way too cold to be outside.
And, and the reason I'm asking, and I know we've already revisited this, but you know what the narrative will be. It's, "Oh, God, city, you just let people down on the street." We know that's not true. It's a false narrative, but it's a hype for some people who want to be, you know, seen as, "Oh, we're the saviors of the world. Y'all not doing anything." But if we reach that point where we're trying to help someone, Zach says it's going to be zero, it's going to be cold, we tell them, and they don't, then what is another alternative? And we, do we go call someone? And maybe that outreach conversation is something we need to have again at the county. And that's a county piece, Mayor, that they need to be getting involved in. Mr. City Manager, as well.
You're a hundred percent right.
Thank you, officer. Didn't mean to belabor the point, but thanks.